From here and we can start, welcome to Fluviana County Board of Supervisors regular meeting. May seventeen twenty twenty three. Let's stand please with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I congratulations.
To the United States, little America, and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We need an adoption for the agenda.
So may, oh, we got change.
Yeah, Madam Chair, can I add two quick topics to new business? One is Moody's issuer rating. And the second is developer meetings with supervisors.
Okay. What was the first one?
Moody's issuer rating.
Okay. All right. Okay, and now I had a motion by Mr. Sherrod, and do I have a second to adopt any agenda?
Yeah, with changes so many.
Which, right? So all in favor of the of the adoption of the agenda with changes? I'm going to oppose, chair votes a, and we have one person. One supervisor is not here. Now we have the county's administrators report. Can you all hear me? This might get stubborn further away from me.
You have to get it close.
It's working.
It's working good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, all right, Madam Chair, members of the board and the public got a few things to report this evening. So we got a few new employees starting for the county. Becky Martin started in the finance department as the financial services specialist. Kind of overseeing payroll. She started on May eighth. And then Brandon Corker started in the information technology department as IT system specialist. And he started just a couple of days ago on May fifteenth. So announcement of National Police Week. So in nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy proclaimed May fifteenth as National Peace Officers Memorial Day. And the calendar week in which May fifteenth falls, excuse me, as National Police Week. Established by a joint resolution of Congress in nineteen sixty-two, National Police Week pays special recognition to those law enforcement officers. Who lost their lives in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. So just some, some things to, some stats. So according to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund. More than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers served in the United States today. Each year, National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial adds new names to the wall. The average is one hundred and sixty-three deaths per year. Fallen law enforcement officers represent all levels of law enforcement, certainly local, state, federal, tribal, and military law enforcement. And today we honor our fallen brothers and sisters across. On May fifteenth end of the week, honor fallen brothers and sisters across the great nation for the service and sacrifice. And offer heartfelt support for their surviving family members and fellow officers. A hero is remembered, a hero remembered is never forgotten.
I literally drove by the sheriff's office today and wondered whether her flag was at half.
So on June Saturday, June third, at the Fluvana Community Center from ten to, from ten AM to noon. We're going to be doing the Fork Union Village Community Meeting, coffee and conversation with the county. Topics of discussion will be the development in Fork Union. Those in attendance would be. Chair Booker, myself, Jennifer Schmeck in economic development, and Mr. Miles in planning and zoning. Kind of what we're thinking of, you know, one. You know, this was kind of the first one we were going to kind of do, and we thought about kind of bringing these to other kind of areas of the county too, just to kind of give the community. A little update on one specifically, I think, you know, one, this was, you know, really kind of targeted towards Fork Union, but kind of give some other overarching. Just updates and things that are happening in the county that kind of affect the county as a whole. So again, Saturday, June third from ten, ten AM to noon.
Have we discussed these?
What do you mean? Have you discussed?
Did we discuss that we're doing these?
No. Unless.
I thought we did talk about it.
Well, I, I think we brought it up, but I mean, as a, like, as a board discussion.
Yeah.
No, I don't think there is a big board discussion.
I'm just checking, just, I didn't, if, if I knew about it, I didn't remember, I guess.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
I mean, it's been brought up in a couple of different things, but no, I don't think there's a big board discussion from a board meeting standpoint.
Right.
And so again, what's the purpose? What, what's the conversation?
Just to kind of, just to kind of give what, what's happening in Fork Union because there's some, you know, changes specifically in the Fork Union.
Yeah. Closing of businesses and people, people are asking questions and it's, it's basically hopefully it's, it's an education. Of how do you, how do businesses come? People think you can just go out and put a business up and that's it. So we wanted to do something. I've been talking about this for. A good while just to do one with Jennifer and then we kind of expanded it. And just to let people have the opportunity to know how things are developed and how. They can participate and answer questions and. We've had our bank to, to move. We've had, we don't have a grocery store. We've had our plumber place to leave and people are, are asking what's going on. So you need to bring something.
And then just to kind of inform the community, you know, what, you know, what, you know, obviously we can't talk about specific businesses from an economic development standpoint. You know, if you're a business, what it takes to go through, you know, maybe the planning process or, or, you know, just some things like that. Just kind of giving an update on, on the county, like I said, Fork Union has some, has some challenges right now, but you know, all areas of the county do so. We figured we kind of, you know, do this. I think there's some topics in here that are going to be specific to Fork Union, but then there's some that'll be just kind of countywide as well.
Yeah, planners do it in other.
Yeah.
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 I think Lake Monticello is the natural next.
Yeah.
Because like Monticello area, the Beltway is experiencing the opposite. So instead of stuff worn out.
Yeah.
It's tons of stuff going in. It's so much of the concern there is the overgrowth. And so if we're going to have it in that area, I think the, the yin and the yang is to have the conversation.
And, and people from the rural areas need to be at the Monticello area. Cause you have people say, why are they putting everything up there? Why are they doing this designs cross? They need to understand that we have growth areas. So that people can come to any of these community conversations.
And I guess that's part of my question.
Yeah.
I was just gonna say.
Trying to, at the same time, know about these. So if, so people from Lake Monticello area.
Sure, it's been put out.
Over here, and I just didn't know about it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we've had it pretty, we've had it pretty, I mean, probably within the last couple of weeks. Had it pretty, you know, splattered about, you know, at the, at the fourteen.
Community.
Community meeting for the, for the solar meeting last, you know, we had some of these there for, for those that were there. We've had it on the county website. And you know, we, we've had it out in fan mail and notifications and stuff like that. So we're trying to make the public involved, you know, no matter where you are, you could come to it. If you're in Lake Monticello, come to Fork Union.
Right.
And so, you know, it just kind of, you know, kind of getting out a little bit of what's happening in the county, but maybe some more specifics of particular districts as well too.
Um, I was gonna say, we've done one of these before in the last ten years. Andrew and I did one at Firehouse one night.
I remember.
And it's my fault that we haven't done them again. Just, and I would reach out to Ms. Johnson in case somebody has a question about schools. So that, I know this is based on business, but if somebody has a question about school, I would help her the opportunity to be at the Fork Union meeting as well.
And I think it's good for, as you said, Muzel, for people who aren't from the community that's happening in to be able to speak at it. And, and as you said, that Lake Monticello, it's a natural growth there because there's infrastructure. So talking to people about why it's coming there is just the same as having a conversation about Fork Union. Of it's not a natural growth there yet, and business is going to come there if people are there.
If we have, yeah, and we've had a lot of, I mean, I've had a lot of questions about Columbia. And I know your task force care, is that the name of it?
We have.
We've been meeting, but people say, what are you, what are y'all doing about Columbia? I mean, that's.
So many people don't know.
They don't know, right?
And so, yeah. Not huge accomplishments, accomplishments that you see, and I'm talking about just the county in general. But I think these are not a bad idea to let people know. You, you don't hear about this every day, but here are the things that we have going on.
Yeah. And, and there's some misinformation too out there. Some people, I'll give a prime example. Some people think that, that our, that our water system up there is, is bone dry because we don't have the water from the James. Well, that's the furthest thing from the truth. We have water in the system. There's water in the tank. We need the James River Water Authority for our long-term water, but we got water in the system and, you know, we're starting to get people hooked up. So I mean, just, just some kind of, you know, miss, miss, you know, miss facts that are out there like that.
Yeah, we, we want us, you know, our citizens to. Cheer us on and we want, want them to know that, you know, we are moving forward. We're doing some good things. We have some challenges and they are involved.
So for the, can, can we agree that the second one should be kind of like Monticello area?
I don't have any.
Can we work on getting something scheduled?
Yeah, I mean, I can.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, and then, sorry, and then. Uh, just last, so just reminder, so we, for the next two months, we don't have four meetings, we'll have three meetings. So June seventh at five PM, let me just make one, one, one change. Remember. For June and July, we are not in this space. We are in the library because with our memorandum of, of understanding with the Arts Council. They do summer programming in here, so we're going to be in the library meeting room for all, for, for both Board of Supervisors meetings. And Planning Commission meetings for June and July. So June seventh, five PM library, June twenty-first, seven PM in the library. And then July fifth, we have a double meeting because it's the one meeting for the month, five PM and seven PM in the library. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Hi, how you doing? Okay, I will now open our first round of public comments. If you would like to come to the lectern, give your name and address. And speak to the board and you have five minutes. Do we have anyone? We have, we have three public hearings. Wait, if you want to speak about the public hearings, wait until the public hearings are open. Anything else that you would like to speak to us about, you can come now. Anyone? Anyone online? No?
I don't see anyone on.
Okay. If not, then I will close the first public comments and we will move on. We have some public hearings. We have three public hearings. And I would just like to go over the rules. The purpose of a public hearing is to receive testimony from the public. On certain resolutions, ordinances, amendments prior to taking action. A hearing is not a dialogue or debate. Its express purpose is to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions on subject items, speakers. Speakers should approach the lecturing so that they may be visible and audible to the board. And each speaker shall clearly state his or name and address. All comments should be directed to the board. All questions should be directed to the chairperson. Members of the board are not expected to respond to questions and respond to questions should be made at the chairman's discretion. Speakers are encouraged to contact staff regarding unresolved concerns or to receive additional information. Speakers with questions are encouraged to call the county staff prior to public hearing. Speakers should be briefed and avoid repetition of previously presented comments. The action, at the conclusion of the public hearing on each item, the chairperson will close the public hearing. The board will proceed with its deliberation and will act on or formally postpone action on such item. Prior to proceeding to other agenda items. Further public comments after the public hearing has been closed generally will not be permitted. So we will open the first public hearing. V dot secondary six-year plan, Scott Thornton, V dot residency administrator. Is he here? Oh, I didn't see him.
Well, so I guess I will, I will pinch it here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So on this, before you, you have the secondary six-year plan. For V dot, again, they came forward with, with the same secondary six-year plan and the information, I want to say it was probably about a month ago. Just to make the board aware of the advertisement and what type of funds are out there for the different fiscal years. For the telefee funds and the district grant unpaid funds and it, you know, looking at this page, it's roughly. Just right around, you know, ninety thousand dollar average, ninety thousand dollars average per year. And then just some of the different projects, secondary system construction program projects that they have that were in the package. I apologize that he is not here and I don't see him online and that would be, I can try and answer any questions if you have any.
Um, yeah. Telefee, telefee, what's telefee?
Yeah, so.
What's that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the specific definition of what each of these funds are right off the top of my head.
Yeah, okay. But it starts in twenty twenty-four on.
Right, I mean, every year the county has allocated funding for telefee funds and district grant unpaid. That the county can allocate towards projects of their choosing. And so these are the funds in that, in those different pockets of money every year that the county has allocated.
Okay.
Um, and, and again, I don't know the specifics. I can't, I can't speak on the specifics right off, right off the top of my head and what those are specifically for. So that's on the estimated allocations for the secondary system. And then this document right here just kind of goes into some ongoing projects out there. One, there's some projects for South Boston Road intersection improvements for Route six hundred six eighteen. Route six hundred rural rustic road for Old Fork Lane. There's a, there's some surface treatment, non, non-hard surface road treatment. There's some unpaved road funds of sixty-three, let me see, your estimated cost is sixty-three thousand. That they can utilize for different types of projects in the county. For engineering, countywide engineering, that's forty-three thousand eight thirty-five. So like, for instance, if the board says, you know, we want, we want V dot to do a speed study on such and such road. Those funds would be utilized to do those types of speed studies. And then, you know, any type of traffic services and stuff like that. So there's different pots of money that, that are kind of allocated towards the county. And that kind of goes through the, the, the transportation, transportation board for approval.
Okay. Speaking of speed studies, a constituent called and was concerned about fifty-three. It's fifty-five miles at some places and closer to the circle. He thinks it should be forty-five. And I don't have the, I think, I'm not sure, it might be near River Run, but I'll call you tomorrow and tell you exactly where it is.
Fifty-three, ma'am? I don't, the only two sections of fifty-five or fifty-three are the first half a mile when you enter the county from Albemarle.
That's what he's talking about.
And.
It'd be right in the.
Right in that circle.
It's forty-five. When you go from one hill down to bottom up on top of next hill goes to forty-five. I know pulling out of Martin King's is not fun.
Yeah.
At fifty-five.
So could we have, I, I don't know how to get a study done?
You see, yeah, I mean, we could because I mean, I guess, I, I guess down at the bottom, our line is down at the bottom.
Top of the other hill.
That's right. It's as we're, as we're going down and then coming back up.
It's fifty-five here, comes down through the bottom, comes up, here's Martin King's, and it turns forty-five right after Martin King's.
Yeah, that's right. Okay. Yeah, I mean, we, I, if, if the board wants V dot to look at that, to look at lowering that speed limit.
We're only going to have more population in that area. That's, people are going to be.
Well, and again, you know, I know they're looking at doing, they've always been looking at doing some, some type of intersection improvements at Martin King and fifty-three. But maybe lowering the speed a little bit sooner, maybe that would help out with some of those issues.
I wonder what their study entails. So for example. And I hear what this person's saying because it's only getting worse. While. The, the new traffic and all the development is already going to slow everybody down, get into town.
Right.
And then we're going to, but it's just, it's a small stretch.
You're talking about a half a mile.
Yeah.
I mean, ten seconds, tops.
So I wonder what they. I think, would they study, is that feasible? Would they study if it needs it by their standards? What does the study mean?
Probably what they're going to do, they're going to probably, and like I said, and I'm not a V dot engineer and you know, I think usually some of the things they do, they put down. Speed, traffic counts and, and then speed, what do you call it?
And I'm only, I'm not even sure they did that when they changed the speed limit from forty-five to. From fifty-five to forty-five from Hurricane Lake on up around the lake.
You know, I don't know. I think anytime they do any type of reduction in the speed limit, I, I, I know there is engineering stuff they have to do. And I would imagine that would be putting out some type of device to record the speed that's going on there for them to then say, look. Maybe they have some, and, and again, uh.
They'd look at the amount of accidents.
Look at the amount of accidents, maybe look at is, are people going above what that speed limit is? And so maybe if they back it down, maybe people. You know, maybe the averages for everyone to go five minute, five miles over the speed limit. So if it's fifty-five, they're really going sixty. And then if you back it down, you know, five, ten miles an hour, does that then improve? You know, different intersection outcomes and things like that. Again, I would, I would, if he was here, I'm sure he could be able to tell you, but I, I'm just, I'm just, I was guessing.
Did, um, did anyone call you about the, um, speed, the old firehouse where fuzzies located? Someone called you go from forty-five to.
Yep, I'm, I'm.
Twenty-five.
I'm, I'm, I've already talked to V dot about that.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I also got a call about that exact, person's speculation was that it's twenty-five because that's where the fire station.
Yeah, it used to be, right, and it's never changed.
Yeah, at one point he said it was going from four, forty-five to twenty-five to thirty-five. But I think what he meant was once you get up to route six, it's thirty-five.
Route fifteen is thirty-five.
Yeah, fifteen and six going.
Yeah, one through fourteen is thirty-five. It goes from fifty-five to forty-five to twenty-five.
Yeah.
Because we talk about that when we drive.
Yeah.
So back, back to the fifty-three item, I actually was going to, if they were here, I'm going to bring up this evening. Remember at some point last year, we asked for information on Route fifty-three as far as its ability to, to.
Handle more.
Handle the growth and, and they said they were going to put something together and it's been, has to be at least a half a year ago.
Um, let's make a note.
Yeah. You know, I've been going through fifty-three a lot at, in different times just to get the flavor for. The traffic and et cetera. And I was in Williamsburg this weekend and they have roads similar to what we have, you know, just double. And it's very rural and trees and everything. So I, they, I don't, I don't know. They say they can't widen fifty-three. So is that something that we have to just endure?
My understanding is you can't widen it.
Can't widen.
And that was adjusted, I'm asking for that from them.
Right.
When I originally brought her up.
I think just for probably the easement standpoint is, is, it would probably be.
Well, you know, you're not going to widen it when you go through Monticello and Mickey Tavern.
Well, yeah, that's.
That's.
Yeah.
And then the S turns going.
That's impossible. That's too historic. You're not going to touch that land.
I, I was glad to see V doc today filling in the rope, the, between the banks and the gutters. With asphalt around. What is it? This, it's around in my area off of six. You know, when you make that little turn, when you get back on center planes, bro. And they were filling in those.
The little, the little thing where you go to the.
Right. Where taps.
Yeah.
And they were filling those in not just with dirt because the dirt, all they do is wash it up and you end up with a sinkhole. And they were putting asphalt there and they were doing a very good job because that's where the danger is when you go, when you, if there's a narrow ways, you drop off and you, you know, you mess your car.
So I, I got a message, Scott Thornton is trying to sign in, but he's, is he having? Okay.
Okay.
And since it looks like we're not going to, I wanted to commend them this evening, the two separate items over the past month and something. Then I brought it to them that they got right on. And one, I think I mentioned last meeting was assigned down Garden Lane. Just, it doesn't say dead end, but whatever it says, those are fair or whatever. And then another one, uh, that right on fifty-three, they got right out and fixed the blunder from the paving company did fifty-three and right on it.
So did you put that into the, to their portal or was it?
They've done it.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I, I actually talked directly to Scott.
Gotcha.
Well, one of the things I would have a question about with roads. The entrance off of six eighteen that they talked about possibly the lake end.
Possibly.
The lake adding the entrance, one that's already there, it just, it's not an entry.
The, um.
The one so that they can make Monish a right turn only in and right turn only out.
Oh, okay.
Because that gets so bad in the evening time.
Yeah.
You're talking about the Lafayette gate they're talking about putting in.
I, I don't know what the name of it is.
About adding.
Yeah, yeah, adding the gate. Six eighteen, I guess, pretty close to the fitness place.
I think, I, I think that's for, that's probably a future discussion for them. I mean, I think if there's any more development or there's changes within the lake, they may want to do that, but I.
Okay, I'm just.
Well, I, I think it's great.
I hadn't heard any more about it.
I've brought up to the lake a number of times and they agree it's a great idea. It's just expensive. But my, my rough assessment, having nothing to do. You know, no knowledge of all this is, of all the safety concerns expressed about the Monus Gate. That if that Lafayette gate was there, and I think I said it last year, I have to think it'd take a third of the. Traffic off of the Monus Gate and a third of the traffic off of it would be a big deal. Because people aren't, if they go to work to Charlottesville and if they're between Monis and the main gate, they're not going to go down with the main gate. Up six eighteen and then on Route fifty-three, we're going to go to the Monus Gate. And so if something was relieving some of that pressure off the Monus Gate, both out and in. Again, a third of that would, if there are safety concerns there, a third of that going would be a big deal.
Scott Thornton and them said they put the yellow things up like they have up at Charlottesville on two fifty. To make it a right turn in only and right turn out.
Yeah, they're, they're talking.
That would be, that would be huge because you have so much traffic backed up. If I, I mean, I don't deal with it all the time. I try to avoid it.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we don't.
At, at some point that, that will have to be a reality. That's going to have to be, that's going to have.
That's up to them, right?
Oh, yeah, and, and, and Scott Thornton is on, if the board has questions, Mr. Thornton, you can unmute if you would. Uh, we can't hear you. You're still muted if you're, uh.
Can we unmute him? We can ask on mute, can you?
And.
There it is.
There we go.
Okay. All right, Mr. Thornton, did you hear some of the conversation?
I do apologize. I just got signed on in the audio working about two minutes ago, so I heard some of it, but not all of it.
All right.
So Mr. Mr. Thornton, I, I tried to explain the telefee funds and the district grant paving and some of the things in the six-year plan. And I'm not quite sure I was probably as accurate as you may be, so. I'm not sure if you want to discuss any of that. I mean, I, I know you brought it forward before for what the allocations are per year. So if you want to give a quick rundown of that.
Sure. So the, the district grant unpaved is, uh, kind of what it says it is for. Paving unpaved roads. So in fiscal year twenty twenty-nine, that fifteen thousand nine seventy-one. That money and all the money in the, the years for the district grant unpaid is meant to bring unpaved roads. That are in the system and, and pave them. The telefees are. You know, a little more flexible use for that. So you get about seventy-five thousand one ninety-nine each year. And, uh. And uh, those you can allocate towards many different types of projects. It could be um, traffic engineering studies, it could be um, traffic engineering services. If you had a uh, safety project that you wanted to fund, uh, you could could fund those, or you could put those in a balanced entry to build up a balance. So if um, there was not a project that the board um, wanted right away, uh, they could basically bank those funds to be able to use them later on when the, when the board uh, came up with a project, they wanted to spend those funds on.
And then I was, and then there's the the second page, which kind of gives a breakdown of some of the different projects there, is there, can you just give a quick rundown on some of that?
Uh, sure, so the um, like I had said in the, the public hearing, you've got the uh, South Boston Road, the intersection improvements at six hundred and six eighteen. So that uh, we use some of the six-year plan funding in addition to the um, smart scale funding. And so we're waiting to hear back on um, the additional uh, one point nine million because of the inflationary adjustments to see if the um, the C T B would approve the additional monies. Um, I, that was in the recommended funding scenario. So they were gonna determine that in their May meeting, and so we'll know um, we'll know if that happens, and then that should uh, or will complete the remaining balance and allow us to uh, move on to the next um, phase of the project. Um, that one is in design, and so they are moving forward um, through the design, but until all the funding is in place, moving to the uh, subsequent phase of the project, we have to wait until it's full, the previous phase is fully funded um, to move on from P E to right away to construction, the the subsequent phases need to be fully funded before you can move to that. Um, the Route six seventy-seven is a rural rustic project that will uh, be fully funded in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And then um, what you see at the bottom of the page is a uh, balanced entry account showing the district grant future unpaved funds. Um, so that's starting a balanced entry for future rural rustic projects. And then the um, seventy-five thousand one ninety-nine from uh, the telefees are going into a countywide traffic engineering services balanced entry account, which can be in that balanced entry account for countywide services. That could be um, speed studies on secondaries, um, secondary signage, just pretty much um, there are a lot of things that we can do for the county um, if studies or if there are a a abundance of studies that the county requests that um, we cannot cover administratively. We would ask for permission to bill that UPC nine nine seventy-three to do additional studies. If um, we ran out of our administrative budget, uh, if the county, for example, asked for seventeen studies in a year and our budget only allowed us to do um, say nine of those, we would ask to uh, dip into that traffic engineering services to complete those studies for you all.
So, so the board discussed a couple of studies this evening, or or discussed possibly looking at a few things. One is the speed on fifty-three as you're leaving Albeyral County, coming into Fluvana County. It's fifty-five as you come up to Hayden Martin Road, and then it goes to forty-five, I think, is it right out of Hayden Martin, right around there?
Just east of Hayden Martin Road, it goes back to forty-five and um, it was brought up to possibly, since it's only a quarter of a mile, maybe a half a mile, extending the forty-five to the county line.
Yeah, so we don't need to um, go into the balanced entry to do that, that doesn't need to be in the six-year plan. All I would need from the board is a resolution requesting a speed study on that route. And then I would forward that to our traffic engineering division, and they would conduct the study, and I can provide those results to staff when the study's complete.
And and then one thing too about the sign that you and I talked about in in Fork Union, uh, the speed going uh, on Route Six, going into Fork Union where it goes from forty-five to twenty-five, and we talked about how we think that may have been because the the former fire station and rescue squad was there. If we want to look at that too, would you need a resolution from the board for that as well?
No, sir, I already have our traffic services folks looking at that based on our phone call the other day.
Okay, okay, all right, good.
Scott, can I, can I ask, so when you say you'll do a study, what does that mean? Does that mean you'll do a study that you would use anywhere else that where you're, you know, did, hey, did V-Dot miss it? It should have been by this point down to forty-five? Or you're looking to see if it's merited to go to forty-five from fifty-five? Like, what are you, when the board says, yeah, we'd like to get a study, what does that mean?
So for a speed study, um, the way a speed study works and the reason a a board resolution is uh, requested is because the speed study doesn't always mean that the speed is gonna go down or go up. What we'll do is we'll go out, we'll set, set up devices, um, set people out there and look to gather information on what the eighty-fifth percentile speed of the road is. And then we post the speed um, at the eighty-fifth percentile or try to be as close to that as possible. So if we go out and do a study and you want the forty-five mile an hour zone to be expanded, but they do the study along that route and they determine that you know, the forty-five mile an hour speed is actually too slow, they could take the forty-five out and then post the whole Route fifty-five. Because that's the eighty-fifth percentile speed.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and by the same token, it could go down when you want a speed to go up. Um, and so when we do those studies, the, our district traffic engineering division will do the studies, provide the recommendation that goes to law enforcement, state police. And once that study is stamped, we are obligated by code to post that speed.
To the board, the reason I ask is, when I was on the board before, uh, Troy Road on fifteen, the board member said, well, I had people complaining that when you turn on a Troy Road, there's a post office on fifteen that, well, when people slow down, you know, it becomes dangerous to make the turn, and so I'd like to look at it being forty-five. I said, well, so then, you know, every road on Route fifteen, you have to slow down for somebody to turn, do we look at it being forty-five? And my only point was, I just, if the board is gonna ask for it, um, I want to know or feel like there's a real solid reason of kind of asking for the government to potentially change something that's there, and maybe there is.
Okay.
I certainly asked if I, if it was one of my constituents, yeah.
I mean, there are other reasons this, the speed may be um, not appropriate. Uh, sometimes you get development on a route, so a route may have been uh, pretty rural and was statutory fifty-five. And now there's a new development or subdivision, the traffic has increased. Um, or there's a use change along that route that may necessitate a reduction in speed. Or um, as Mr. Doll had indicated, maybe there was something there before that is no longer there. So the lower speed limit is no longer valid, so we would need to study that to see if that is is the case, um, because, but we are not allowed to change a posted speed without a study to support it.
So, so, so from the board, does the board for the Hayden Martin fifty-three piece, or you know, going basically east of, east of Hayden Martin to the county line, does the board want, with staff to bring back a resolution to look at that?
Yes.
West.
What's that?
West of Hayden.
Of west, yes, I'm sorry, yeah.
Isn't that already all forty-five?
No, no, from Hayden Martin, going to the county lines fifty-five, down the, down the.
East of Hayden, yeah. Not, yeah. Martin Kings.
Did I say Hayden Martin?
Martin is over where I.
Yeah, no, you're right. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay.
Talking about that little.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, anything else from the board before I open the public hearing?
Mentioning to Scott, we brought up about, there was a Route fifty-three study that was gonna be done about, or or some report about how much it could be expanded and so on, with us looking at growth.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna follow up with him on some of these things, I I made some notes to catch up with him on that.
Okay. Anything else from the board, any other discussion, then I will open this first public hearing, anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and talk to us about what they, what you've just heard from our six-year um, study, please come to the lecture and and give your name and address and tell us what you'd like us to know, anyone? Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
My name is Carol Parsons, I live at fourteen Barrett, I'm in the lake. Okay, I've been dying to do this for years. Number one, please do not touch the four-way stop at eighteen, six eighteen and six hundred. It works great, everybody knows what to do, everybody moves. Please don't touch it, don't make it wider, don't make more lanes, just leave it alone. We do just fine. As a matter of fact, there's an intersection in Washington DC, if you've ever been up there, Arizona Avenue and Nebraska, probably fifty thousand cars go through there every day, it's a three-way stop sign, it works great. Monish Gate, what a pain in the neck that is. How do you fix it? Telling people to only turn right is great if you don't live there. If you live there, it's a pain in the neck to go all the way over the turkey sag and then come all the way back. Not good, I have a very simple solution for you, and it's cheap. Stop signs, they work, they won't work initially, but they will work once we get used to it. And this phone keeps going out on me. Ditto for Riverside, Riverside is unbelievably dangerous. And the reason for that is, if you're trying to go left out of Riverside, the curve of the road makes oncoming traffic almost impossible to see. Plus, you've got people coming up the road and you can't see them either. So it's really very dangerous and tricky. Solution, simple, four-way stop sign. No problem. And Lake Monticello Drive, with all the construction and all those homes that are being built there, it's amazing to me that nobody figured out that you're gonna have thousands of cars coming down that road. And now it's really, when I'm coming down that hill, past the dam, I'm hoping and praying that those guys are gonna sit there so I can go through, put up a stop sign. That's all, I mean, we're not around Lake Monticello, we are no longer resident, rural. When I first moved there in two thousand and three, where the C V S was, we had cows. The cows are gone, there are tons and thousands of people there now. So we can't think rural around Lake Monticello. The amount of development that is going on there now is unbelievable. I mean, if you've traveled over there by, what is it, that, that, where the development is across from uh, effort, which was approved, I was at that meeting. They're gonna be, how many thousands of people in there? How many units are gonna be in there? Four hundred? So there's another thousand people. So we are growing, and despite the fact that you may not want it, we have changed. The other thing is circles, growing up in Washington DC, I love circles, I know how to do it, they're easy. I know for a lot of people around here, it's been difficult, but they're getting used to it. But why is it every circle that is put up, within six months, somebody's put vegetation on it? And when the one went up on fifty-three at uh, North Boston or South Boston, sure enough, six months later, vegetation, I called the police department, I said, please get rid of the vegetation, it was gone. Next circle was at fifteen and fifty-three, vegetation, called the police department, please get rid of the vegetation, it's gone. Now the colonial circle, there's vegetation, please get rid of the vegetation. I don't know who says it's a good idea, but you have to be able to see everything that's going on at the circle. And when that vegetation grows up to four or five feet, you can't see anything. So that's a danger, so somebody needs to make sure, no vegetation.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak to the board?
I'd like to mention to the board or ask a question, as far as that stretch, when I call.
Do I close first? I need to close it and then come back, okay? Anyone else would like to speak from the audience? If not, I will close.
On my name. Yeah, I don't, I don't see anyone on.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. No, all right. So the, this first public hearing is closed, and now Mr. Fairchild.
I think, didn't that study that we opted into through T J P D C? Um, isn't that analyzing the, the Riverside Gate area?
All the way down through the bottom of the sewer plant.
Yeah, so that's been recognized as, I think, the, the area of.
The, this traffic study.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if T J P D C, I don't remember, the, the board authorized for V-Dot to do a, a safety study on that stretch.
T J P D C.
No, no, that was a V-Dot study from, I think we were going from a little before Broken Island Road all the way down to the, basically.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
As I talked about adding the Crawton section.
Yeah.
With driving the school bus out of the Riverside section and out of Broken Island and out of Crawton, Crawton.
And and that one was more than a speed study, I think that was, uh, I think they called that a safety study, which I think in, includes speed and then other factors.
And I guess it's what I'm trying to get around to is that there is a, there are things in the mix to analyze what is best there.
Yes.
And I think uh, I don't know if anybody here would know, I don't know that you could legally have a four-way stop there, because two of the entrances are on private.
Private property, I don't think, yeah, right. That's why you don't have four-way second intersection.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Anyone? All right, we have a motion.
I move to accept the resolution for the V-Dot Secondary Six-Year Plan, twenty twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and V-Dot Construction Priority List twenty twenty-three, twenty-two, four, as required by sections thirty-three dot one dash twenty-three, thirty-three dot one dash twenty-three point four of the nineteen fifty Code of Virginia.
Okay. Have a second? All right, a motion by Mr. Sharon, a second by Mr. Fairchild. Paul and Trevor, anyone pose, if not Chair, vote Zach. Next, we go public hearing, Z M P twenty-three oh one. Is that a J, J and B L M O L L C, Mr. Miles? You know, uh, Community Development Director.
It's some It's good evening, um, Chair Booker, members of the board. Go, go ahead and go over the um, this request for you tonight. Um, Z M P twenty-three oh one, uh, J and B L M O L L C. It's a re- rezoning request to conditionally rezone from A one Agricultural General and R four Limited Res- Residential Limited to the B C Business Convenience zoning district with respect to two point two plus or minus acres um, as Tax Maps uh, nine, Section A, Parcel fifteen B, which is the main parcel in Tax Map eighteen A, Section seven, Parcel one fifty-eight A. Subject properties are located on uh, north of Lake Monticello Road, State Route six to eighteen. And it's known as twenty-nine eighty-seven Lake Monticello Road. It's in the Ravanna Community Planning Area in the Palmyra Election District. And uh, that star is located in the lake, but it's because I'm trying not to cover up, but it's right over where it says Monticello. Um, it's just uh, right near the main gate. These are the two parcels, the front parcel is the main parcel um, that has the um, office building. And then the um, back acreage is the A one, that's also part of um, this request tonight. Just wanted to take you around uh, the site a little bit with some slides. Uh, this is the main entrance uh, to, on to six eighteen. To on to six eighteen. It's right, right there. Um. This is looking at the property straight in from six eighteen. Um, and you can see the um office building. And its access points. This is in the parking lot, uh looking at where the majority of the customers and staff would would park. Um, with their uh storage uh in the backside of the building. And this is kind of showing you um what the building looks like um from a distance from some of the residential areas. It. Really looks like a really large house as opposed to an office building um on this property. So to give you a little history, um Dr. John Lyon, uh he operated a dentistry office at this location for many years. Um, and then it was used later on as a professional office uh for the Flavanna Review Newspaper and their publishing company office. Um, what we want, let the planning commission know, um and also let you all know that rather than each time coming forward um. Uh throughout uh last uh fifteen, twenty years of requesting a special use permit each time. Um, it was recommended to Dr. Lyon and his wife Betty, the owners, um. That BC rezoning with conditional rezoning would be a better opportunity. Um, and then um if the rezoning was granted, um we could also combine the parcels um through ordinance of vacation. And um. So then that way it would all be one piece of property, all zoned under the same zoning. And um Dr. Lion's um main intent, uh as he's retired now, is to. Um, get someone to lease this building and then ultimately maybe do a owner purchase. So um we've, we we've worked with him. Uh, and also the building official and I, Andy Wells, we worked with him on the inside and outside of the building to give him his options and he chose this route. So. The Ravanna Community Planning Area designates the subject properties for neighborhood mixed use. Um, in this case, including small, commercial and professional office uses. Um, so the most appropriate zoning um for that type of um those type of uses um is the BC Business Convenience. And it's exactly what it means. Um, it's convenience to that neighborhood or the area that you're serving. Um, and it is in compliance with our adopted comprehensive plan to serve the immediate area. So some of the uses, um we can kind of go through um Dr. Lion's proffers. Um, the zoning uses that would be permitted would be a lot of your smaller neighborhood uses, uh bakeries, butcher shops. Um, some daycare center or garden center uses. Um, his office, office dental, medical and professional uses. Other um. Personal service establishments such as barber shops, beauty salons. Dry cleaners, and I know this sounds like they're old fashioned kind of uses, but some of these uses are actually coming back. Uh, and working with Jim Jennifer Schmack and um. Uh, economic development, we talked about um dry cleaners with seamstresses and tailors and shoe repair work. Um, fine art studios and then other specialty retail stores. And small restaurant uses that would serve this area. What we're looking at and worked with him to not have are high traffic volume uses. That are um such as a drive-through bank and fast food restaurant uses. Um, funeral homes, which are very heavy on the weekends. Um, gas stations and convenience stores. So anything that generated additional traffic light and noise. Um, that um would be uses normally in in a a larger BC piece of property. Um, he's proffered those uses out. Um, just like um we've been doing all along throughout uh twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three. Um, this, this would be um subject to our screening requirements from view of adjacent properties such as residential and agricultural. Um, the parking lot, so five spaces or more with commercial vehicles, um. You would have an opportunity um for solid fence landscaping or combination thereof um to screen some of this um. With six feet in height and then evergreen trees planted every ten feet along such fence. Um, if the next uh building user chose to do dumpster and recycling bins and they did not um locate those. Um, screened by the building, they would have to be screened um with dumpster uh enclosures. Um, and then it's usually low maintenance materials, um. Uh, white vinyl fence to match the foundation or what have you um from the public grid and adjacent properties. Up to this point, um generally there have been no concerns from the joining property owners. Um, with this case or request, um especially once um a few that did contact us. Uh, read through the proffers and we explained those to them over the phone. Um. Like I said, these, this, this is the applicant uh practically choosing to. Take care of um all of these kind of issues all at one time, rather than having. Um, different users come through every three or four months and requesting something every couple of years. Um, so the planning commission did recommend approval five to zero um on this. Um, there were no public speakers at the time. Um, and uh we're subject to the applicant's final proffers and um. Clark Gathright, uh the engineer is here representing the Lions um on behalf. If you have any questions. I can answer questions or Mr. Gathright could as well.
Any questions for Mr. Miles from the board? No questions. The applicant, did you say you were?
Um, Clark Gathright is here. Um, he's their their civil engineer. Um, I don't think he had any comments or questions to add, but would, if there are questions from the, you all or the public, we can answer.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, boy, you don't have any questions for that open? Okay, so now we'll open the public hearing. Uh, if you'd like to speak. Um, about this, come to the lectern and give your name and address and speak to the board. Anyone would like to speak about? This project? Okay, yes.
Thank you. Good evening and thank you all for the work that you're doing that impacts so many people. My name is April Ballard. I'm at eight seventy-three Jefferson Drive. So I'm in the lake and I live very close to the location. On uh Lake Monticello Road that's being discussed right now and just wanted to add some concerns, certainly. Um, because it sits right in the center of multiple, multiple residential areas. And I just wanted to to say I am relieved and thankful to hear the thoughtful way that this is being approached. Um, the drive up up Lake Monticello Road uh from the point of. Uh mulch, mulch monkeys and long and foster real estate. That is a beautiful canopied drive. It's natural, it's lovely, it's as lovely as any landscape architecture area that I've seen in so many places that I've visited. So thank you all for being thoughtful about protecting that. Um. And not contrib- contributing to a sense of sprawl at at the around Lake Monticello. Um, it's appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak? Anyone online?
Don't see anyone, Madam Chair, unmuting or.
All right, then I will close the second public uh hearing. And come back to the board. Anything from the board?
It's, it's why I was like. Come here. I wanted to go check it out and then. The property right behind it, um. If you, can you bring that map back?
It's the end of the Crawton section. Well, one side.
It's actually the um.
Uh, one side's across the section, the other side is the one across.
It, yes, so in uh Villa Jokes. Off that back, yeah, that property right there.
Yep.
Um, you know, obviously that's the people closest to it. So I dropped in. You know, kind of knocked on the door and what do you think? And. That she, she wasn't alarmed by it. Um. It is interesting, you know, I know we put the signs out, it's up to everybody's, you know, certain citizens' responsibility to be informed. But when I was trying to describe to her which part, which property it was, so first of all, of course, she knew nothing about it. And she goes, oh, you mean that property with the yellow sign? I said, what's the yellow sign that is relevant that I'm talking about? Um, I I'm concerned, to me, it's two different things. The the property with the building on it. Next, since I was in school, it's been used for commercial purposes. So it's clearly a commercial use property. Um. Along with that, to add in. The second property, which I don't see any real relevance to what's happening to. Uh, for him to sell that business property. To say, let's tack that on and make that BC also. Um. I don't see anything that does other than increase the value for his sale. Um, if somebody wanted to come in and add that in as the part of the business property later. I don't know what the differences of them had them doing that then, and here's what we'd like to do on the property compared to now. So I'm not saying I'd vote against it. I I just don't see how the, the two of them get lumped into one. There's a business use property. That's been subject to having to come back time after time. And then there's an A-one zone property. I don't know how they both get lumped in as the same.
Um, no, here, here would be my one thought and maybe I might be a one miss one. It would end up being a piece of agricultural land is totally landlocked. And all of a sudden, it's the value of that would be nothing.
It would be landlocked and it would be. Very difficult to use for any real purpose. Because the um. Clearly, if you look at the picture, you can see that that it's been used together with. The, let me call it the developer's property. It makes sense in light of the of the orientation, two properties to each other. And to the road and whatnot. Uh. If the front is rezoned to business. And the back remains agricultural. It may even be difficult to access it at all. Even if the, even if the people were agreeable. Uh. So in effect, you'd, you'd be. You'd be doing the opposite of of economic development. You'd guarantee. No economic development on this property, on the back property. Or no development of any kind, really.
Right.
Because I don't think you, I think there is a case on which I happen to be on the losing end in in circuit in the Supreme Court. Uh, that would say that. If this is. Commercial property in the front. You can't traverse it for agricultural purposes. Now, that may sound a little harsh to you. It sounded a little harsh to me when the Supreme Court said it, but the Supreme Court did say it. So i- as a practical matter, this property. Really ought to be sold together. However, it's gonna be used.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'd just say, I wonder if he bought, I think he later bought that back property. So.
He did it required, Mr. Fairchild did it quiet later. Remember also if it remains agricultural, he has to screen from himself. Because he's adjacent to agricultural, so.
The fact that he later bought that property, knew that he's buying, you know, that was on, I admire him for it. But he did buy a piece of property that he already knew was. Landlocked and and that he couldn't develop. Yes, I I I might have the same aspirations if I was him though, I don't know.
But owning the front that has the the access to the road, it only makes sense for him to want to buy the back.
Yeah.
So.
I'm not sure what he used it for, but you can see where the driveway goes around it.
Yeah.
So I'm guessing that that was just to expand parking for.
Overflow.
Yeah.
Parking during his.
Parking, there you go.
His heavy, heavy periods of dental cert, uh, you know, appointments during.
So the setbacks. Uh. Are such though that there could be another building built there, correct?
Um, potentially, there's um, there are some uh topography kind of things going on here. Um, I, I think that we did discuss. Um, some future use could have another building there, but it'd be very small. Um, and and.
Because his tax is, if he's not gonna get that out of it, he's just increasing his taxes on the property. Right?
Um, no, the whole.
His value is gonna go up.
Um, yeah, he would, he, he, we had that discussion with him. We actually had him work with Mr. Sheridan and um. Making sure that, you know. His taxes or whatever, but the whole, whole idea was for him to bring all this together as one piece of property. And make it more seamless for the next user, like he's, he kind of indicated. I would have liked to, when I purchased the property, to have had an easier route to start my business. Kind of like we were talking about with the Fork Union scenarios of, you know, making sure when people are wanting to do a business that. His Dr. Lyons, uh, um, really his main thoughts are, I enjoyed running this business at this location. It was very successful. But he wants to see someone next be able to do the same with.
So my point is that. The reason for doing this would be that, that there's gonna be a second building potentially added, otherwise.
Um, not necessarily.
Well, I know.
Yeah.
And there's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, it could, it could be.
Why increase what you're gonna pay on taxes? On the property if it's gonna serve you zero value.
Well, you said it yourself. He plans to sell the property.
Right.
Right. So, I mean, why not increase it the the value of the property, right?
Because it's gonna, because it'll likely accommodate the building of another building.
They may not, but it it makes it easier and it looks at almost as if the building is on the other property.
Yeah, it is. And that's, that was another issue.
So it it is about adding to the value and you don't add the the value of it by doing nothing and raising the taxes.
True.
So it's about likely building the second building and I'm probably okay there. But then that's where I started getting into, as I mentioned with Wolfpack. Fred, you're smiling. What's?
Well. You know, there's a truism about this, and that is the developer wouldn't be asking for it if he didn't think it was in his interest.
Right.
So I mean, every single developer that asks, that's not a lunatic, thinks the same thing.
Right.
And it's a perfectly rational use and and the, I mean, my judgment, it's a perfectly rational use and it complies with the comprehensive plan. So. Uh, you know, I'm not telling you, you have to approve it.
Right.
But it wouldn't make, it it simply doesn't make any sense to me. To take the front and rezone it to something that accommodates what it's been used for. And. Refuse to do something that leaves the back with no practical use.
And my, my only concern is, is back to, I said it on on Wolfpack, is. Doing zoning changes that we, where we don't know what's gonna go on there. We we have zero. Uh, we, we know what can't go on there. By some of the proffers, but. Um. You make these zoning changes and. And it could be another steel building. Let's put there and I, and I don't care to know about what people's opinions are, whether it will be just another steel building there or not. And um. So a- and I guess my reference to. That it's not necessarily a natural thing, because when we talk about the the front building being there. Well, you know, it's almost on that property line, but it's not about the front building. That second property is not about the front building. It's about. Adding another building onto the, onto the the second parcel.
That may well not be true.
Might not be.
When I say that, let's assume nobody, nobody wants to build a building on that property and nobody ever does. And within.
Yeah.
foreseeable future. But if you look at it, you can see there's the, that property has been used in connection with with this, with this front property. If no other things, then overflow, overflow parking or playgrounds or whatever it is. Uh. And I'm telling you that if you rezoned, I think that would be unlawful use.
I'm sorry, what?
You would be reducing the utility of that property by not by rezoning the front and not rezoning the back. You'd be reducing it to near zero.
But wouldn't that be up to the property owner who both owns both of them?
He does.
He, he does own both of them.
He does.
Like I said.
Right.
To the property owner who owns both of them, wouldn't that be up to him to make a decision of? If one got zoned and not the other, he could say, I don't want the front one zoned alone.
That's too late. He can't do that. Once you act, it's been rezoned. So if you act tonight and rezone the front. And and decline to rezone the back, it's a fait accompli. He'd have to go back through the zoning process. And that wouldn't cure the the problem that that he perceives he's got now. So I mean, I'm not, I'm not here to advocate in favor of landlord, but. This, this creates a problem that doesn't exist now. Because these uses are probably non-conforming. But they wouldn't be non-conforming after it was rezoned, because then it would be conforming. Except for the violation of the property line and and. And whatever access the the back property uses over the front. That's, you know, that's a peculiar. Uh, that case I mentioned to you is leads to very peculiar results. But it, the result is that you, you've got agricultural property behind some other zone property. That doesn't allow agriculture and you can't access the agricultural property. It doesn't allow agriculture and you can't access the agricultural property across the 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 non-agricultural property. That's, I'm telling you, when that case came down, we we tried this case in Orange and in Orange County Circuit Court. The, the, the um the result was in favor of my class who owned the back, who owned the agricultural property. And and in the Supreme Court, that was reversed. And the result was, in fact, there's little or no use you could make of the agricultural property. That's a significant change.
I'm curious, in that case, was the same, was the same property owner?
No.
The, the.
No, it was not.
Yeah.
Hey, are we finished with the discussion? Thank you, Mr. Miles.
I'll, I'll, I'm going to vote for it, but I my concern is, is is just starting to rezone properties because the request is there and without knowing around that Lake Beltway, what's coming in. And the impact it's going to have, but I mean, I understand.
Why are you voting for?
What's that?
Why you say you're not, you're voting for it, but.
Vote for it, but it, but it, it's, it's part of a broader, I can see the peculiarities of this property, but it's part of a broader concern of just who do we, you know, just can anybody ask around Lake Nocello, the Beltway for a zoning change and not knowing where it's going to come, because it will certainly improve the value of the property. Why not, you know, who do we allow for and who do we not?
Any comments to what he just said?
I I will, I will say one thing about this one. I think this is one of the things that we brought it up for a second, then we went past it. Part of the buildings on that.
Is on there.
On that one. So what issues, what can of worms do we open up if we approve the front and not the back? When part of the building is on the back, so.
I don't think.
Yeah. No, Mr. Miles said it, but you said part of the building.
It's close. And when we do the ordinance of vacation, to vacate the and put the two parcels together.
But his answer, no, it does not. The building does not cross property line.
I know, the building doesn't cross the property line, but also.
The white line goes, yeah, but remember that's G I S, the G I S.
Trust me, I know the G I S is not perfect.
Yeah.
To your question, the building doesn't go on.
I thought somebody had said that and I thought that he said, yes.
Yeah. And so currently, the other thing is you can't combine R four and A one zoning. So making it all B C zoning, you can do that, combine it and make it one piece of property for future use.
I just found it interesting that one of the fast up pa- uppaced businesses was funeral home.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What'd you say?
People are dying to get in.
People are dying to get in. One of the fast uppaced businesses was a funeral home that was outlawed.
Right. Okay. All right. Are we finished with the discussion? Thank you, Mr. Miles.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have motion.
I would like to. I move that the Board of Supervisors approve Z M P twenty three oh one. A request to amend the Flavanna County zoning map on two point two acres plus or minus acres of Tax Map nine, section A, parcel fifteen B and Tax Map eighteen A, section seven, parcel one fifty eight A, to condition additionally rezon the same from A one, general agriculture. And B and R four, limited residential to the B C Business Convenience zoning district and subject to the proffer, dated May third, twenty twenty three.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Iger and a second by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor, any, any more, just I think we've discussed this one. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The chair votes aye. Okay, thank you. Our next public hearing is S U P twenty three oh two Andrea and Robert Nichols. Mr. Miles.
Yes, ma'am. Um, so this uh, this request um, also occurred at the April eleventh Planning Commission meeting, um, just like Dr. Lyons' request. And this is um, S U P twenty three oh two Andrea and Robert Nichols. Um, a special use permit request in the A one um, Agricultural General District to permit agricultural enterprise and event facility uses on forty two point nine plus or minus acres known as Tax Map forty eight, section one, parcel three. Now, the property is located on the north line of West River Road Route six and is known as fifty one ninety nine West River Road. Um, the subject property is located in the rural residential planning area and in the Cunningham election district. And this is the approximate location right there, um, just, just east of Scottsville on Route six. This is the entrance to the property, um, Hardware Hills Vineyard, um, coming off of Route six. You're looking west to uh, towards Scottsville. The subject property and the um, entrance area was right, um, right up at the um top of the property there and their current um, tasting room is located in right off of the um, West, uh, West River Road. So it's two uses. Um, one use is already underway, um, and has been, um, but the agricultural enterprise use um, relates to um, more of the intensive processing um, of uh the, the facility for winery, um, use served, serving wine by the glass bottle um, and offering tasting samples uh, through the A B C uh, board in their current tasting room facility. Second one is the, the re- um, reason for their expansion, um, the event facility, um, which is a place of public assembly um, for hosting these functions to not include weddings, receptions, banquets, anniversary meetings or conferences. I'm not going to read all through that, but that basically there will, um, Rob Nichols is going to show you all the um, expansion plans shortly after I present, um. So what it is not, um, the event facility, um, we currently have two definitions, um, a lodge, um, and um the lodge, um, is more like uh, your V S, V F W Lodge, um, F O P Lodge, um, kind of um, membership based uses and those are more um, facilities, Ruertan Club, you know, that are done by a special use permit and they're, they're held for the membership only and and their guests. Um, outdoor gatherings is another um, example. Um, it's more of an um, open outdoor area for two hundred to three to five hundred people, what have you. Um, and that's also not what they're doing there, but um, just wanted to mention that those are two special use permits unto their own. Um, and the lodge is always required a special use permit in the zoning ordinance and then just most recently the zoning ordinance in August of twenty twenty two was updated um, to um, help facilitate um having additional meeting space and um, conference room and wedding reception space and here in the county um, for rental hosts and their guests. Uh, this is uh, what we worked with, um, the Nichols, their applicant says, um, relative to, um, they're meeting all their required setbacks off of West River Road. And you can see the um, the top of the slide, you can see the existing um, tasting room and um, wine production um, area um, facility and their addition is more in the yellow outlined area, which Mr. Nichols will go over with here shortly. This is the overall um, property, um, the, you can see the circle area you just saw was the, it's the close up version. Um, their vineyard areas is um, in the a- a- area around there and then the back back half is their private property with their private residence, um, and uh, where they enjoy um, their time on the property, so. Um, these are the, the special use permit conditions, um, this would be submitted um, and and approved uh, for Andrea and Robert Nichols. It's not transferable. The key part here, um, and working with the Sheriff's Office, um, applicant, um, at their larger events would notify um, the Sheriff's Office, um, at least thirty days prior to the event facility for events that are pretty much, um, you know, up in that range of a hundred to two hundred persons, um, to be located on the premises and allows them to work. They have a very good um, entrance, um, uh, and access on to Route six, which it also just kind of helps them work for some of the larger wedding events or other events they may have there. Um, to have any additional um, assistance from the Sheriff's Department on that day. Um, the event is a field facility, um, outdoor, live recorded music. Um, you know, kind of covers and goes with our, our noise ordinance on ten AM to eleven PM. Um, they do have um, interest in doing in the mornings, like Saturday mornings, uh, five K runs. They could also start at seven AM. And so we've worked with the applicants about um, the noise ordinance. I think, um, since they reside on the property, they're also quite interested in um, having some of the events uh, stop at those times as well. So um the site, these are some of the board's um, main conditions that um, we have on all of them. New maintained in a neat and orderly manner, um, Mr. and Mrs. Nichols are quite, um uh, very well, um, maintaining the property. Um, in fact, when I was posting the zoning sign, Mr. Nichols was cutting the grass. Um, you know, already, um, early on in the spring, so, um, and then we, we or any other uh, staff members, V D H, anyone would always, um, have an opportunity to inspect the kind of the site if needed. Um, and then we would notify, um, the Nichols prior to doing that. Um, we, at this point, don't see any concerns with that. They've been doing a great job working with us through the process. Then if some, some point, um, if there are ever any concerns, which we don't see those, um, there always is your opportunity to revoke the special use permit um, on the property. The great thing is, um, Flavanna County has received um, numerous emails and letters of support for this proposed request. Um, Ms. Nichols was um, forwarding a lot of those to me prior to the Planning Commission meeting. Several speakers also spoke in support during the Planning Commission uh, public hearing. And so therefore, the Planning Commission recommended approval um, five to zero, along with the same seven conditions we just went over and as recommended by county staff. And I could answer any um, questions, but I think Mr. Nichols wants to come up and go over his, um, their building addition with you all. And kind of give you a little background on what they have planned.
All right.
Hi, good evening. And thanks for the time. I'm Rob Nichols, as, as Doug described. Um, my wife Andrea and I live uh, and work at uh, five one nine nine West River Road in Scottsville. What we've got here is just, these are rough concept drawings, just to give you an idea of, of what we're looking at for uh, scale and just um, aesthetics. And it's really just a, a simple, small barn that would be in keeping with the ex- the existing structure. Looks like a barn. It was purpose built as a tasting room by the previous owners, uh, but the same look and feel as, as what is there today. Um, it gives us some more indoor space, um, some additional shade, which summers in Flavanna, shade is a premium. Um, and allows us to do some small events as well. And as Doug indicated, it is, um, you know, it's our home as well, so uh, we have no intention of doing anything other than than small events that end as early as possible. Really a, a place for people to gather, uh, is, is what it's all about. We've had requests for small meetings, um, anniversary parties, birthday parties, little things like that, a place for the community to come together and, and that's the purpose uh, for looking at, at tiptoeing down this path.
Okay, any questions from Mr. Nichols? From the board?
Business thriving?
We're doing well. Um, you know, we, we, we're in two years in now, two years in July, um. And we're still kind of building the plane as we fly it, but uh, yeah, the business is, is going well. We've, we've built a nice customer base. The community's been wonderful. Uh, so, so far, so good, yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right. And if there's any questions, any of the plans, please, um, fire away.
No questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right.
Thank you.
Um, now, I will open the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak about this project, come to the and speak to the board and you have five minutes. Anyone would like to speak to the board? Anyone online?
I don't see anyone online unmuting or raising their hand.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing and bring it for the board members discussion. Any discussion from the board?
Then we move our June and July meetings and rotate back. Between there and Cunningham Creek.
Yeah, that would be.
Just saying, my wife might come to a board meet.
Right. Yeah, we'd go there and Cunningham Creek, sure. That would be fun.
It's tourism and it's beautiful. And me, it's a natural, yes.
If it's no discussion, do we have a motion here? Who would like to make the motion?
I move that the Board of Supervisors approve S U P twenty three dash zero two, a request to permit an agricultural enterprise and event facility use with respect to forty two point nine plus minus acres of Tax Map forty eight, section one, parcel three, subject to the seven conditions listed in the snap report.
Right, we have a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Fairchild and second, Mrs. Iger, all in favor?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. All right, thank you. Okay, next. We have at one Action Matters, uh, proposed B O S member salary increase.
Yep, uh, so Madam Chair members of the board, again, you know, kind of every couple of years prior to the elections coming up, um, and per state code fifteen point two dash fourteen, fourteen point two. It talks about salaries will be fixed by the board, limits, reimbursement, blah, 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 and just some e- excerpts from the state code. You know, it talks about when, when this needs to occur. Um, it talks about prior to July one of each year, the current board made by a recorded vote of majority shall set a maximum annual compensation, which will become effective as of January one of the year following the next regularly scheduled elections. And any board supervisors may fix a highly, higher salary for the chair or vice chairman or both, other than the other members of the board. And again, we did this a couple of years ago. Um, so just kind of looking at, this is from what I, what I have in my record, so B O S member salaries increased on January one, two thousand eight. Previously then, also member salaries increased were approved in twenty nineteen. So on May one, twenty nineteen, the board voted three to two to increase this pay for supervisors thirteen to fifteen percent effective January one, twenty twenty. Then again, um, salaries were increased and approved in twenty twenty one. On June sixteen, twenty twenty one, the board voted three to two to increase the pay of supervisor six percent, effective January one, twenty twenty two. So this right here is kind of what the current um, annual amount is for the chair, vice chair and other members of the board, the monthly and the annual amount. So kind of what we did before, using the same methodology, you know, through V A C O, we get um, an annual survey from V A C O showing what is the you know, annual population of a locality, what is the amount that they, that chair gets and the other B O S members get. They don't break it down into vice chair and kind of what we did before. Um, and what we've done in the past is, you know, we, we, we've got a comparison of kind of our seven counties, less Alamo County. So some of the counties that are really kind of in the T J, T J P D C a little bit, that we kind of often compare ourselves to. So that blue line shows what the uh, what the amount, average amount is for the chair and the other B O S members, and then we break that amount into a per capita amount for each one. Then we do the same thing um, for all other coun- all other counties in Virginia that have a population of you know, that are com- comparable to Flavanna of the twenty thousand to thirty five thousand range. And so again, you get what the average population is of, of those counties. The average amount of the chair, the B O S member and the per capita of each one of those. And then we do the same thing, basically take all twenty nine counties, come up with the average population, what's the average amount for chair, B O S member? Then the per capita amount, and then in the yellow line is basically what, um, what Flavanna is, what and, and again, this is going by Weldon Cooper population as of July one, twenty twenty two. And it gives, you know, we have what our chair makes, what the other B O S members are making. So the difference like we did before, we compared, we made the change based upon the comparison of where we are now versus the all twenty nine counties average in the past. So the difference between for the, for the chair, the point three eight eight percent, point three eight eight to the point four two three is roughly around a nine percent difference. And from the point three four three to the point three six seven is roughly a seven percent difference. And so that is where the recommendation and you know, is following the same methodology that we did for, did previously is a recommendation to move the chair up nine percent and then all other board positions, vice chair and B O S members up seven percent, and that would be effective July one, twenty twenty four. Um, and then, so this is what the current is, this is what the new annual would be. And again, you know, the proposed pay increases in timing complies with Virginia Code fifteen point two. Um, the increase for fiscal year twenty four would be one thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars for the last six. Um the increase for fiscal year twenty-four would be one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars for the last six months of fiscal year twenty-four. And then those funds, I would recommend to pull from B O S contingency. And then the annual increase for fiscal year twenty-five would be thirty-six eight, three thousand six eighty-nine. We happen to answer any questions. And in 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 the package too, you had the big again, I compared ourselves to counties that are comparable, but you had all the counties and and what what some of them were making.
So are you recommending that we do increase it?
I do.
Any other discussion from the board members?
It's just i- i- it's keeping in, i- it's keeping the board in in tune with what what other counties are doing, what what the what the averages are. And again, you know, just like, just like other positions, you know, the board has things that they do, they spend their time to do things. And you know, there's cost increases in what you all do too, so. So just that that's that's the methodology behind it and and comparing ourselves. You know, trying to get a good average of 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 comparable comparable counties, you know, we 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 don't have Almirall County in there, they would completely skew that number. You know, we were not including Fairfax. You know, we're not including a hundred thousand dollars a year. Yeah, so I mean, we're using comparable comparable comparisons.
Can we go back aside?
Yeah.
Am I understanding right? So it when I look at board supervisors, not chair, all twenty-nine counties average. Then you look at Flavanna, we're like five percent above the all twenty-nine percent.
No, twenty-nine. No, we're below. So so for here, you're looking at the pink. Yeah, so so Flavanna is point three four three. And all twenty-nine counties average per capita is point three six seven. So what the board is making per capita, per uh per per capita is below what all twenty-nine counties is making.
But but under B O S, if you don't use per capita, I mean, we're above, right?
Yes, if you don't use per capita, correct.
That we're we're about five percent.
Yes, yes. If you if you if you were comparing yourself just basically strictly on a number standpoint, yes, but i- in the past, we have based it on kind of a broken it down to the per capita basis.
Are any other uh discussion?
I was struck by Mr. Payne's comment last time around, Mr. The 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 logic behind it, which was essentially to discourage, to to make sure that there's compensation that, obviously, this is not large compensation, but as I think he put it, was to discourage bribing of officials in essence. Uh and I was struck by that. And I think, you know, you have to look beyond where Flavanna is today. And you know, where it may be or may not be down the road, but um and I imagine if I was a Fairfax board supervisor and making nine thousand dollars and working sixty hours a week, because it's a full-time job up there, that um I'd be very tempted. So, you know, I I'm not saying personally, but I'm just saying, I don't know that I would. I don't know that I would run for the position to begin with if I was gonna commit myself to working forty or sixty hours uh in in Fairfax and uh and to and had to have all the headaches and do the compensation.
I will tell you what's very strange. Because of our size, we understand the workings of government, the effects of land use, things of that nature, much better than those that are in the larger places do.
Yeah. Okay, do we have, we have a motion or?
Motion.
Any other discussion before we?
I I'll just say what I said last meeting. With, if I was telling everybody leading up to the last budget, if you're ever gonna look for an increase, don't make it this year. Because we're gonna increase in E M S, fire. Lawyers, now we've increased much as uh we have in schools. So be, I still know I could have told people for the past six months, if you're gonna do it, don't make it this year, and then I'm gonna vote for an increase in in what I get next year, I just can't do.
Well, that's a that's your privilege, you know. Yeah, you can do that. You can do that. Yeah. Like, we've done that before, you see. Yeah, you see what we had before, if you looked at the other ones sometime, everybody didn't. We had three to two.
Yeah.
And people, you vote what you where you.
You know, I mean, it's a point well taken. I I again, we're talking three thousand dollars, which is, you know, well within the margin of error of our budget to begin with, but um I I I think it's just a philosophical approach in terms of, you know, is it timing ever good, you know, is growth gonna continue to happen, is you know, the demands on the board supervisor is gonna happen, we can't predict that. Um and because you only have, you know, the opportunity to do this every two or three years. Um I think
Every two.
Every two years, I think. To be somewhat consistent with the surrounding counties. To do with a lot of the other things.
Yeah, and I've been on it sixteen years and it was three, three cases within those sixteen years. And you know, it doesn't. But.
Yeah, the extra, what is the increase, the extra fifty dollars might help to pay for the gas.
Okay, so do we have a motion? As on it's up here, and I'm looking at the yellow. Anyone want to make the motion?
I'm going to approve the pay increase for each Flavanna County Board Supervisor's member to the new pay rates of chair. Uh nine hundred and eighty-two dollars, new annual eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty-five. Vice Chair, nine hundred and seven, new annual ten thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight. Members, eight hundred and fifty-one, new uh annual ten thousand two hundred and eight dollars. With such increases to be effective January first, twenty twenty-four, the F Y twenty-four amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars to come out of the B O S contingency.
Okay, do we have a second? And the motion dies. So do we make another motion to?
Just dies.
Exactly. Okay, all right. Next, we we don't have any appointments, so presentations. The January cooperative extension, Flavanna unit update, spring twenty twenty-three, Miss Cam Mayo. Senior Extension Agent, four H Youth Development Unit Coordinator. Wow, Miss Cam.
That's an awful. Well, thanks for a few moments this evening, just to give you an update. I feel bad around budget season when you hear about all of the wonderful things that we've been doing. And so I just wanted to take some time tonight and give you an update. And if you've stopped by our office and we've not been there, it's not because we're not working, it's because we are out in the field working. Go ahead to the next slide. So just an overview, we have staffing updates to share. I want to give you a situation analysis update, progress from the program, and of course, future plans. I am so happy to announce that we have hired a four H program assistant after a very long search. Um Kirsten Cropp will be joining us. She actually started last Thursday and we put her straight to work on a school program. She literally clocked in, got her I nine and got straight to work. So absolutely. And I did not know, I had worked with her before, did not know she had an education degree. It just it never connected, so I'm pleased that she applied and we were able to bring her on board. Von Hill Junior will be joining us again this summer as an emergency hire. We did not have a successful intern applicant, so he will be strictly programming this summer, uh mainly through the month of June, once he finishes with his school um through the high school assignment. So next slide, please. Situation analysis is a process we go through every five years. And this just helps us determine what the needs of the community are and how we can best program to meet those needs. So just the process starts with designing the tool that we're going to use. We've decided to use a statewide tool and kind of um focus a few things for Flavanna County specifically. We do not have um the eastern shore kind of issues that you would expect, maybe the southwest Virginia, the the coal strip mining that they're trying to reclaim. We don't have those issues in Flavanna. So we've tailored that a bit. We're still in that process. We'll next begin collecting data through this summer. We'll then analyze that data to come up with key issues. Um in twenty eighteen, our key issues were youth engagement, civic engagement with our adult volunteers, natural resources programs, and of course agricultural awareness. Um I don't suspect that there will be a large change in those issues, but that's certainly a process that we need to go through to make sure that we are correct and on the right track. We'll create that report as a team and then we will share that in December. That's our target due date. Um it's not necessarily, we can't meet all of the needs to extension programming, but we certainly want to make sure that we're giving it a fair, fair shot. Next slide, please. Just highlighting program areas. Um Fay Anderson is our food family nutrition program assistant. Uh her main program is working with our low-income individuals in our county and surrounding counties. So Fay runs all the time on the road, meeting with those individuals. Primarily here, um she works our food bank distributions, providing educational material on not just the nutrition side, but also the budgeting side when um dealing with food insecurity. And then just to highlight for her garden-to-go program, partnering with our senior centers in the county, she does reach those, has a great working relationship with our senior centers. Um hundred and twenty seniors reached through a garden-to-go program, giving them access to fresh vegetables they're growing on their own. Next slide, please. In the agriculture and natural resources realm, we have several areas that Rick Hernandez has been targeting. He has been working with several folks needing to be certified to apply pesticides, including you have a county employee that is working on that right now with Rick. Um producer visits are primarily centered around needs. Um we have some that are working on berry production that want to expand their operation, and he is well suited to to assist them. He also has a close partnership with the Soil and Water Conservation District and shares what tools are at their disposal that we can kind of connect and make those partnerships with those residents. Um he has also been working with the E P A Worker Protection Standards Trainings. He's also been providing those in Spanish to our bilingual workers that need that. So it's a service that we're lucky to have Rick able to provide. Two highlights on this slide, that picture in the middle, the bottom um center of your slide is a mobile processing unit that residents can check out to process animals on their farm through a process, through a partnership with V S U. That's our extension partner. Um they can harvest and and slaughter their animals on farms so that they can market them. So they go through a training in which they are certified, and then they'll be able to market those animals as inspected. We do not have anything like that. So we are thrilled with that partnership. There's a hundred and forty-four people on the waitlist to be trained already across the state. So we want to make sure that folks are aware that that's something we have available. One other note in this realm, um it just applies to all, I guess, livestock producers, but animal owners. The F D A has a guidance for industry that will take effect June eleventh, where you may have been previously able to purchase antibiotics or antimicrobials for your animals over the counter. Tractor Supply, southern states, you're going to no longer be able to do that without a prescription. That means you need a partnership with a veterinarian. We are in a veterinarian shortage area. So all of those things together, we're working in the A and R agent to notify our residents that that the clock is ticking. You'll need a partnership with a veterinarian to purchase things like penicillin that you could just do over the counter. So that's a key initiative we're working on right now. Next slide. I'll roll through some of the four H ones. They're my favorite, in case you couldn't tell. Um just targeting the numbers, you see the slide in front of you, I won't read it, but we taught a lot of elementary students about the importance of strawberry production. Three hundred and eight students reached there. Uh we turned them into scientists. We didn't just read to them. We made them do the five cents observation, pre-K all the way through second grade. Next slide, please. We've trained our teens for four H camp to serve this summer in cooperation with our partners in Green and Alphamor on Charlottesville County. So our teens aren't just serving here, they're they're going out and working with others. I will note on the previous slide, nine volunteers with that project. Next slide, please. Fourth grade agriculture day, those are your volunteer partners in the center of your slide there. All of those organizations represented to teach our fourth graders about the importance of agriculture and how we play a role here in Flavanna County. Again, two hundred and forty-nine students, forty-two volunteers helped deliver that program.
How did I miss that?
I'll make sure you're invited next year, Ms. Harper. Um make sure you're there.
I just looked, I said March, it's thirty first, no.
It's always the coldest day of spring when we're there, but they don't complain. They're outside enjoying agriculture, everything from squashing the spotted lanternfly to where your beef comes from. The answer's not the grocery store. Okay, next slide, please. Our community garden is rolling. If you've not had an opportunity to just swing through Pleasant Grove and take a peek, it is beautiful. Um we have some four Hers involved there as well, and all of the produce that's that's harvested in the demonstration plots for V C E and four H, go to the food bank or to the senior centers. So they're learning here in these pictures how to plan their garden, plant their garden, and then they'll help harvest and donate. Next slide for me, please. Uh we had two Earth Day celebrations, one onsite at a school, uh May fifth with first graders and one um with the second graders at Pleasant Grove, because we couldn't accommodate both of them at once. But just again, highlighting two hundred and nineteen students, two hundred and twenty-five students, but note the number of volunteers needed for this program. Uh we focused, of course, Earth Day, we focus on our pollinators for both of these events. Next slide, please. Kerry'sburg School Garden, if you'd ask a third grader who I am, they think I work there. And this spring, it probably was true. I was there two days a week all day long. We had every single third grade student in the garden for thirty minutes a week for five weeks. I can't do that alone. They volunteers there, um averaging over twenty-four hours each, over a hundred and twenty volunteer hours total on that project. Every third grader went home with a bag, a bag of soil and a plant so that they could garden at home.
Trust me, they brought them on the bus.
Which we received permission to do through transportation, just so you know. Um but in summary, we we reached twelve hundred youth just this spring. Um and then removing duplications from the read allows a thousand individual youth, one thousand ten individual youth reached. So far, we're not done yet. Next slide for me. Uh just to give you a heads up, I am really proud of this picture on this slide before we finish, sorry. You have award-winning staff. I'm not talking about me, I'm just in the picture holding one. Brittany Redman was noted as the, she received the meritorious support award from the state, epsilon sigma phi. I I'm really proud of the support she provides, not just to our unit, but across um the state to other agents as well. So very proud of that. Rick's award was for his well water program, and I had two awards. Had more than two awards, but uh basically programming awards. And you can see, those are the programs that we are doing and doing a really good job with. So just wanted to share that. Just looking ahead, we have lots of programs coming up, and um I just wanted to highlight that they're in progress now. So now that I have a program staff member and an emergency hire, those dates will be coming out shortly. So do you have any questions about that? Thanks.
How many people did they have well water? I guess, what do you call testing?
The final number, I believe, was fifty-eight kits were tested from Flavanna. We'd averaged about forty each year. So a little bit higher this year.
Do you do you have that, do you get more from one district over the other, from a particular area of the county or?
We do not. It is fairly well distributed across the county. We do offer the convenience of a northern collection site and then a southern collection site for, you know, folks who have to drop off at seven A M. But they are fairly well distributed across the county.
And you get your results on the computer.
Yep, results directly to you.
And then if you all get results that are not what they need to be, huh? Does that kind of go into any type of, you know, database or anything like that?
Oh, no, no. So those results are completely confidential. So we do not, I do not know what your test result was. If if you have, but if you ask a question of us, you know, say I have coliform bacteria in my water, we can provide assistance on how you may treat that as a homeowner and then connect you with some businesses that, you know, state-approved, that you can um work with to improve your water. What we can't do is then fund drilling you a new well. That's the part where we can, you know, look at resources. Um but we're not able to do that for you. We provide the education piece.
And I guess where I was going with that is let's just say that someone's well has, I don't, some type of contaminant or something like that. Would there be a way for homeowners around them to know or not really? It's just
No.
It'd just be the homeowner lets their other home, their neighbors know or something like this. Yeah.
Correct. All of our well water testing is confidential. So we have had um daycare facilities for private daycare facilities um that just watch children after school, for example. And we can't, you know, I can't look and say, hey, that's a childcare. Can you tell me if they have lead in their water? I'm not, we're not permitted to do that.
And when did, when do you collect the water for testing?
Every February is when we've been hosting that clinic. So typically, that third week of February.
Yeah.
And you have a limit?
We have a limit of approximately a hundred and seventy-five test kits. So um I think the biggest key is is getting the word out, but also folks say, oh, I tested my water two years ago, it's perfectly fine. I I used to be one of those people.
Charge too, that hinders people from doing it. Was it like sixty dollars?
The the test kits were sixty-five dollars this year, and we were offered a stipend to forty people. The, the test kits were sixty-five dollars this year and we were offered a stipend to forty people, twenty-five people at twenty dollars each to twice. Um, to encourage those folks to participate. And we compare that, you know, if you were testing in a state certified lab just off the street, it's approximately three hundred dollars for all of the testing metrics that we use. So.
Okay, that's a good thing. Yeah.
Make sure we help to get the word out next year.
Certainly, certainly. Any other questions for me? I have an answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all the hard work.
That's great. And now we have, uh, John.
Yeah, we got this, uh, we got Ted Wright with, uh, John here. So one, um, John notified the county that since the, the minimum funding request of eighty-seven zero seven zero was not approved. Again, the board approved seventy-six thousand one twenty, there would need to be a ten percent service reduction. What John had, what had proposed was eliminating the midday link, which is a two day a week, Tuesdays and Thursdays. Service connecting county residents to Charlottesville and Alamo County. Um, and, and the reason this is, is just want to inform the board, one, if that's the service that i- if we have to reduce, is that the service they want to reduce? And then also too, if, if there is some reduction in service um, by, I think Ted said by federal standards, you have to notify the community that uses the service. So one, secondly, John has also notified the county that we will be receiving a fiscal year twenty-two rebate in around June or July this year of twenty-two thousand and some change. So one thing they're requesting proposing is to utilize part of the rebate um, to make up the ten thousand nine fifty difference to not eliminate service for fiscal year twenty-four. And then in addition, if the county decided to utilize the full um, rebate, not only would they not have to cut service, but they could make the intra-county circulator. Um, instead of a three day a week service, it could be a five day a week service, but that was just something for the board's consideration. Um, and just kind of as you see, so here is the, you know, kind of inter-county Fluvana circulator. Right now it's Monday, Wednesday and Friday from eight thirty AM to four PM. And then going here to look at the other services. What John was proposing was cutting the midday link service, which is Tuesdays, Thursdays. And those are the times that they would run, which goes from Fluvana to Charlotte, to Alamo. And then there's also, we currently have a, a, a workday link. So really the question for the board is, is does the board want to change anything for what they did for the funding? And, and if not, if we want to cut service, I want to make sure that the board is making a decision for the residents, what service they're actually, if, if there's, if there needs to be a reduction, what services is being reduced?
Okay, um, the, the midday Tuesday and Thursday, they come out at seven thirty, nine thirty, one forty-five, two forty-five. That means if I go to town at seven thirty, I can come back.
That's, I think the one that you talk about that you have to sit there for four hours for a doc.
Yeah. Um, if I have a doctor's appointment at seven thirty, can I, excuse me, when will a bus pick me up to bring me back to Fluvana? Is that's how it's used?
Right. I mean, in the morning we'll, we'll take you there and the afternoon we bring you back.
But that would be. But when you say afternoon.
Well, one forty-five, two forty-five.
Oh, okay. Oh, I see. So you have to stay till one forty-five. What, so what's the advantage of the midday?
Well, it's for, I think it's for people who do have longer appointments. They might work, they might need shopping. Uh, I don't know the history of the route and why that particular times were picked. So I'm kind of guessing as to that was the origin of that.
Okay. How many of our residents do you serve?
Well, we measure uh, our utilization and trips, how many trips that we serve. So in the case of uh, all that we have all three services, we've been averaging over three hundred riders trips per month so far this fiscal year. Um, this particular midday service, we're averaging about eighty-five people or trips a month. Um, the intra-county service is about eighty a month. And then the uh, workday one, which is the Monday through the, the, the three day a week one, is actually averaging about a hundred and fifty people a month. And both those that for FY twenty-three, which is ending in June, uh, we're actually twelve percent uh, above what we projected. And in fact, we're doing the same level of riders this year as we projected for FY twenty-four. So I'm kind of expecting FY twenty-four to be even higher ridership.
So is there still a fee of, of what's your fee for going riding?
We're riding, we're providing uh, free, free, free fare at this point.
Since, since the COVID, yeah.
Before COVID, you were charging?
Yes.
I think, I think if I remember correctly, didn't you all say last time you were here that, that the, the cost benefit factor of collecting the money, someone collecting the money, recording the money and then, you know, what it takes to go through someone's hand was not worth or was not, or there was no return investment on that, on that fee necessarily?
That, that's correct. I mean, before I, I arrived um, in December of twenty-one, uh, staff had done a um, analysis and concluded basically what you just said, that it was causes more to collect money than we actually got. So not only was it helpful during the pandemic, it, it sounded like a business decision that we needed to make. And by the way, I wanted to recognize Hal Morgan. He's your representative on the John board. So um, just give him that shout out.
And we're, and we're still looking for one more joint representative too, I think.
We're taking applications if you're running.
But when you were charged, how much did you charge?
I don't, I don't know. It was before my time. It's two dollars each way.
Yeah, it wasn't. Sure, but expensive, but so when, if, if you cut the midday, how many people you said eighty-five people?
Yes.
But, but that, those eighty-five people, not the same.
Not necessarily eighty-five trips a month.
Right.
Yeah, a month.
I mean, it could be one person taking an eighty trip, no?
Did you all consider whether you should charge more?
Well, at this point, charging a fair would cost uh, more than we would get. So it wouldn't contribute to reducing the cost to the county.
So charging more. If, if you're losing, if it's costing you more, I guess, maybe I'm misunderstanding your answer. If it's costing you more than it, than it, than you're bringing in revenue.
Charge more fair to offset to, uh, I guess that's a possibility. I don't know if that was looked at or not. But um, for services like this, um, even the best of circumstances, you're not really recovering a lot of money to make a difference to the um, to the bottom line, but that certainly would be a possibility.
And the one thing to consider is that in many cases, people that are choosing to use John, because they don't have the financial resources to really, you know, if they're doing a regular basis to go and I know it sounds minimal, whether it's two dollars or three dollars, but if you're charging ten dollars, you know, then maybe you start hedging your, 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 your trips um, and it impacts your, your life from that standpoint. So, I mean, public transportation is by definition, there's sort of a public and, you know, I, I can understand if you're charging two dollars per trip, the administrative costs is not worth the effort. And that's, I think, kind of good, you know, and in the long run. Um, where's that balance is the tough question, right?
I guess in part, you'd have to see what the market would bear.
Uh, I mean, yeah, you, you can do that. I mean, that's uh, that's certainly part of it, but the other part of it is, you know, without, uh, I think without, you know, when you look at regional transportation challenges, workforce development, um, assisting the elderly, assisting the handicap. The, the, those, those are the people that John really serves on a more regular basis. And uh, you know, is that the market that you're trying to bear on that while trying to still support regional transportation? At a whole, right? At a whole.
So with the rebate of twenty-two thousand, some, it comes back to us.
It is.
What, what do we, what do we do with that?
Let's go back to the general fund.
So they're saying if, if we give them the ten thousand, then they could keep this.
Yeah, I mean, if, if the board said that you wanted to fund, use the part of the rebate, the fund that I would propose to bring a motion back. Some type of supplemental.
Screen up again, because it said if we use the total rebate, then.
Yeah. So, so the fir- first bullet is you could use part of the rebate to, to make up the difference. The second bullet, bullet is you can use the full rebate if you decided to not cut the service. And then the, I'm sorry, this, this service, instead of being a three day a week service, would be a five day a week service. And, and do you have numbers on this service?
Yes, and um, that service, um, we, we're doing roughly eighty rides a month. Now the other service, the workday link, um, which is carrying twice as many people, we could expand that to a five day a week too.
That's the one you.
Well, I mean, we could do either one. Uh, I suspect the workday link is a employment related uh, travel. So instead of being three days a week, it could be two days, I mean, five days a week. So we could do that five days or we could do the in-county one, five days. Whatever your choice would be. And we could, you know, if you were inclined to use the full rebate for that purpose, uh, we could certainly um, hold some meetings with the public and get their, with their opinion or uh, again, looking at the ridership numbers, um, the workday link uh, does twice as, twice the business that the other ones do. It's probably about half our ridership out of Fluvana. So it's probably would warrant some additional investment. That's, that's your thing. Now I was talking to Hal earlier and he said the intra-county, it may be a greater need because I think some of the senior centers aren't served um, as adequately as they maybe could be. Is that right, Hal?
That's correct.
Yeah. So that, so there could be a social service need to do the intra-county one instead, but it just kind of gave you some perspective. Um, you know, we received the COVID money and that enabled John to accumulate some additional cash. With Hal's leadership, um, the board decided once we satisfied all of our financial policies, we had uh, cash left over and we could have used it for any purpose, but Hal and other board members said, let's give it back to the communities. Um, we, we saw significant increases in our contract prices to the communities. All, all, we, we serve seven jurisdictions, including Fluvana. Everybody saw increases for various reasons. And we saw the rebate as a way to take the edge off of that. And I think six of the seven uh, counties, if Fluvana were to be one of them, I have voted to use the uh, money for sustaining service. So be five of seven, if you agree to that, it's going to be six of seven.
So Eric, did you? And your proposed budget, did you make that cut?
So what I did in my budget is there was, there was recommendations and what I originally put in my proposed budget was for all nonprofits was a five percent, depends on what they requested. But I did not put in greater than a five percent, I think it was greater than a five percent increase in my proposed budget.
Yeah. I'm sorry. I've got this here, which is your recommendation was uh, seventy-six thousand one hundred and twenty?
Correct.
Okay. And is that what we funded?
That's what you funded.
Okay.
And what was last year?
Seventy-two.
Okay.
Was seventy-two?
It was seventy-four and some change.
So we did increase it?
Yes. Yeah. My recommendation was a five percent increase over last year.
I see.
I think, you know, transportation is an issue with, with rural counties. A tremendous issue. And um, John is the, the only thing we have personally. I would not want, I would want to do as much as we can to get John out here. Um, that's always some people get to work and I know, cause you know, I transport people myself because they can't.
I think, uh, you know, the other thing that's important to us consistency in terms of the delivery of the services and so that residents can rely on it. Uh, I mean, you know, gas prices still pretty high. You could see them go higher, impact on traffic. Um, when you have public transportation helps to reduce that. So, you know, to, to me, yes, Fluvana is growing and, you know, workforce grows with it, whether they're working here in Fluvana, whether they're working in Charlottesville. Um, consistent, reliable transportation on a regular basis makes a lot of sense. So even though I recognize that the intro link is important as well too. You know, that, that lack of sort of five day a week, way, week, work week. What do you do the other two days?
You know, that's.
Right.
That's a challenge. So I, I personally rather see, you know, consistent workday week um, for the residents there and or both. And, you know, this is, this is a year where the impact of the uh, with the rebate gives us an opportunity to provide more services and, and see how residents respond to that without impacting the budget.
So we're not making any action on this.
There, there is no motion for this. I mean, uh, I guess for one, if the board says we want to keep the budget as is, then, then the board needs to, I guess, kind of really make a decision. I mean, they are recommending uh, from the ten percent to, to cut the um, sorry, um, the midday link. But if the board says we don't want to do that, you know, I, I would have to come back with a, with a formal motion if I kind of have some idea which way you want to go.
What we want to do.
And where, where are the people picked up at their homes or at a specific place?
Uh, we have a door to door uh, service. So it'd be close to their home or at their home and, and taken to their destination.
Is that for all, is that for all services?
Yes, yes. Though the mid, though the uh, workday link appears to be at specific places. I think it's.
E-dubs. I mean, they made it E-dubs all the time.
Yeah. So I think that may be an exception to that.
Right.
I, I do want to point out that uh, John is uh, not a nonprofit. Uh, we certainly don't make a profit, uh, but we are what we call a public service corporation. And Pluvan was actually one of the founding members that have created John back in nineteen eighty-two. So uh, we're owned by you. And um, and the shareholders represented by Hal in this case um, voted to do the rebate. Um, so that's how, how it came down.
Okay. So um, let's look at the two options. Here they are. Um, that we are looking at. We can do ten thousand nine hundred and fifty and keep the three days. Yeah. Or we can do the twenty-two, seven, sixty rebate.
Pretty close to the middle.
Right. And it'll be a five day week service.
Ten thousand eight hundred and ten would be the leftover. I think.
But.
Well, there is a third option, which is that we don't.
Do any of it.
Right.
It's always.
And we cut the service.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned that uh, the, the way this works, there's just not enough. Uh, you can't. I, I was trying to help a man who asked me, how, how can I use John? He was in a wheelchair and he needed to go to the hospital for some tests. And he would have had to sit there for a very long time.
Yeah, but yeah.
Wait, right.
And he has unlimited budget.
Right.
And he has to hire pri- private transportation for a wheelchair.
Or, or, or a, is that true? Or a community person could take him, I takes people back and forth to the hospital.
What was the question?
Uh, do you um, take people who have wheelchairs?
Oh, yes. Well, thank you. Your, your thing was that they had to sit there and wait for four hours.
Oh, yeah, it was long, a very long time. And the man's passed now, he's dead.
That's our transport, that's our transportation, unfortunately.
I would hope that we could do something better to serve the big community.
We did something better. My only thought process on that would be, it would be three times more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
Because then you'd be hauling one person back and forth instead of trying to do the four hour trips where you can haul.
And yeah, we do have a gentleman here. I forget his name that has a van that goes back and forth. And, and he charges by the mile and by the hour. So it could cost you to go to town um, about from sixty to a hundred, could be a hundred dollars. So, I mean.
Yeah.
We, we need to do all, as much as we can to.
Yeah, I think it's an opportunity to look and see. Yeah, I think it's an opportunity to look and see, because, you know, we normally wouldn't come back and say. During budget season, um, I appreciate Mr. Doll's efforts to sort of, you know, have a consistent approach. Had he taken the number and not done the five percent approach, we would be having this conversation probably. And we'd be talking about the rebate. And then we'd still be saying how we're gonna do the rebate, right, you know, so, uh, to me, it's an opportunity to say. Without cost to the taxpayers here, uh, for this year, well, how much more service can we get and provide? And how we tweak that is really sort of a matter of delving into the numbers, which staff can do and come back and make recommendations.
And there, and there are several studies on the table, I think Thomas Jefferson Planning District is doing a study. On transportation, but they're starting in Alamo and. And Charleston, Alamo has its transportation problems too, you know, in the rural part of the county. So, um, transportation pops up in everything that you study. That is, is a, is a, a barrier. It's transportation and, and we do have some transportation, and that's a good thing.
Well, starting uh, July one, uh, John will be looking, uh, studying what the transportation needs of the rural. Parts of the region are. We're gonna try to quantify what that is and how close. We are to satisfying that mark. And we certainly would, uh, love to have Pluvana, I think, uh. Your deputy expressed some interest in uh, maybe being part of that at some point. Or we can certainly come back to you, so, uh, the issue about what the, what the transportation needs are in the county as well as elsewhere. You know, we're, we're gonna be getting on that here in the next few months, so.
Do you have any um, counties in the area that use your service more than we do?
Yes, I mean, Louisa, uh, is much, uh, has invested quite a bit in transportation. I think the biggest counties we serve have the biggest budgets is Green. Um, Louisa, Alamo, if you want to count the city of Charlottesville, those are the four biggest ones. And then Buckingham is probably the smallest.
Right.
And then Nelson and yourselves are kind of in the same.
Yeah, because I was at pace yesterday. Uh, on call to Row, and they have at least ten vans where they pick up the elderly. And you all were still there. I mean, John was there as well. They needed you as well to transport people. And, you know, they come out here to get our elderly and take them up there, so.
To hear Hal for a second, you said something about the senior centers and how they could be served, if you would not mind coming out.
My name is Hal Morgan, I live um, Lake Monticello. And I've been your representative on the John Bourne for the past few years. Um, yeah, I mean, people, you know, I, I um, sit on the inter-agency council calls, um. Um, with Ms. Harris and many others, uh, um, the first uh, Thursday every month, and. One of the things that I've been told is that the, because of our. Mon- our Monday, Wednesday, and Friday service, that senior centers that operate on Tuesday and Thursdays, they don't. You know, John doesn't serve them. So I, that was my, when I, Ted and I were talking earlier, I said, well, maybe that's the service we should look to, but I think. If you decide to go with, you know, we, that's some have a quick survey we'd have to do. Talk, you know, talk to the people at the senior centers and what's the better usage and what would be the. Best benefit for the people of Pluvana County, is it, you know, the local circulator? Um, five days a week or going into, you know, the city five days, the off-hours. So, but I do think there's, you know. I think, if we can bite the bullet and do, do it this year, we'll have much more better information. Um, next year, budget time, in terms of our, the use of our service through the North Carolina. Uh, North Dakota State University study we're doing and what, and find the results of what the uh. Regional plan district is, um, is gonna come up with too.
And they're not gonna come up with anything anytime soon.
Well, no, I think the study's gonna be. Be done by. By, by December, I believe.
Yeah, and that's um, Thomas Jefferson, and it's somebody else was doing the study too, was his name, Lucinda?
Listen to Shannon, listen to Shannon.
Right, Shannon.
Yeah, yeah, she's part of the regional planning district, yeah, so they're, obviously, they're, they're gonna come up with good information, then it's gonna be. The, the next thing is, the, you know, the, 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 what do you call it, the. The large picture is, is to get how to raise more money. A sale of regional sales tax increase or something like that, which, again, they're, the unconstrained model they're calling for. Would provide, we get great service, uh, in the county and, uh, be, you know, seven days a week service. But it still has to be paid for. I mean, the advantage we have, and I mean, is if you remember a budget presentation early this year, is that. John, the money that John provide, I mean, receives. Every dollar you put in, you get, there's three, three dollars comes in from the state and federal government. So. You know. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, so, so my big push was, one, I mean, they had, they had a notification requirement that there's gonna be a reduction. So if there's gonna be a reduction in service, I just want us to notify the public and then them to notify the public appropriate of whatever service needs to be reducted. Be, be reductive, be reduced.
Yeah.
I'm not, I'm not sure which days, but I know Kent Store, I believe, is Thursday. Yeah, and who's on Tuesday?
Who's on second?
Scottsdale, no, what's on second? I don't know.
Um, I looked at that.
But, but, but if there's an.
One every.
But if there's an, if there's, you know, the will of the board not to reduce service, then I would come back with some formal motion. But, but if, if the board says we want to keep it. But keep the budget as is, then I think we just need to let John know what service needs to be.
You have at least three announcements.
Okay, well, I, I'm still not. Sure how many people we, we serve, because if we have eighty trips a month. Um, that's only, like, not even three people a day. And is it, is it trip, a round trip?
Well, don't forget the service only operates two or three days a week. So it's not three or four people a day, it's more than that. What, whatever, you know, if there's. Six Tuesdays and Thursdays a month, divided by eighty is twelve. Or thirteen or fourteen, if I'm doing the math quickly enough.
And it's a trip, round trip, or is it?
It's one way. Well, way we count trips is one way.
So, really, actually. It, it could, it, it would seem that it'd be close, at eighty, you would seem that's close to being about forty people in service. I mean, you're gonna think the average person we got in the town is gonna be.
You could look at it that way, yeah.
Okay, so what do we, what do we want, um?
If, if I may, real quickly, the immediate decision would be, July one, I gotta have a balanced budget.
Okay.
So, if it's not in the cards to sustain service, I need to know that at your earliest convenience. The decision to expand service, that can take a little longer if you want. Uh, but the, the immediate decision would be go no-go on, on this, so. Um, so.
Okay, so, maybe you need to have two motions.
Well, I mean, I mean, I, I mean, I guess the board could make a, make a, make a vote right now on, on whether or not you, you can. You intend to keep funding level as is.
I think it, I think it's a mistake to, to look at current ridership. And again, I think this boils down to consistency. Um, and also the changes that have happened due to COVID, so I think. When you look at ridership, the purpose of public transportation is to get people to ride. But if then you don't provide the service with any consistency. Then you're not gonna get that ridership ultimately, so. Is it the best, is it, i- is it the best way to look at and say? That, oh, only forty people were being served, or is it better to look at and say that the capacity? To serve X many people in the county is this because we have consistent ridership? I think these buses carry, what, twelve to eighteen people or something like that?
Thirteen, fifteen, yeah.
Fourteen, fifteen people, so the capacity to serve. And bring people back and forth on a regular basis is really what you're trying to create. And that's why you make an investment into public transportation, which is a subsidized investment. Understand that it's a subsidized investment. Uh, but, again, that's the goal. And if you go to a lot of other countries in the world, you see very robust public transportation systems.
I'm not trying to be rude, I'll make this quick. You got two and two, I don't think we need to cut anything. So, if we just keep the service level, whatever needs to be done. And, I hate to run, we got smoke inside of a structure.
Oh, yeah.
I got run.
So, um.
I'm for keeping it level, using the. Part of it to keep it level service. Continue the service that we are already providing, instead of cutting services. If that makes sense.
So then moving forward, how do we decide who else comes ahead of us or in front of us with nonprofits? And says, and I have this doubt, this isn't negating the importance of regurgitating. Those who come and say. Hey, we, we're gonna cut too, and it's not.
That's, that's it, it's an individual.
It's not, it's not a, it's that they're playing the card, they're gonna cut because we didn't fully fund the request, and. So will we continue to fund who comes in front of us, because I'm sure all of them are. A good purpose and serve some good cause to our community, and then, um, if, if you're gonna increase it. Which I just couldn't imagine. Doing because we weren't even gonna fully fund the request, you're gonna increase it by almost twelve grand. Then you're increasing that every year, because next year you'll be the ones who cut service again, if you just fund it now, so. This is gonna be a rollover, so we're gonna go from, uh, we only funded. The majority of it, but a percentage of it, to not only fully fund, but potentially. Funding even more, I mean, we, we got a budget process.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, but again, I don't think, you know, I think it's one of those things where, you know, the. You, you know, the, they have a very fixed cost.
Yeah.
They gotta drive out here regardless, right? So, you know, other, and, and again, you know, you're all nonprofits say, for every dollar you get this, right?
Right.
Which is true, you know, so the question is, you know, yes, you're getting, you're, you're getting the dollars that are helping to do more to provide services to your community. You know, are the services of value, I, I.
So, yeah, yeah.
You know, ask, ask the person who takes that bus every day whether it's of value to him. Yeah.
So, what I'm hearing is, uh, that we, that Mike said, that we keep the service the way it is.
Well, I don't think you have, I don't think there's, uh. I mean, I, I think that there's at least three people would like to keep the service as it is, I personally think that we have an opportunity to take. You know, ten thousand dollars at no cost to the county right now. And look to see whether we get even more value out of the service.
But, but it is a cost to the county, because it's a cost to the people. Because when we're talking about funding the schools. And it was mentioned in that conversation that, well, some of it to go towards raises could come out of the fund balance. So, that is, if, if, if that could come out of the fund balance, then what's in the fund balance, evidently there must have been. More than what we needed in the fund balance, so if there's more than what we needed in the fund balance. Then we can give money back to the taxpayers by reducing.
Or we could plan for the next school that.
No, no, but. Then if it goes into the fund balance. And it wasn't budgeted to be there, then it's extra money that belongs to the taxpayers that we could reduce taxes.
And so.
Money out of fund balance to reduce taxes, but if we could use it towards expenses, which this is using it. This is money that would go back into the fund balance, that, that could go back to reducing taxes, we're using it. I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about how we use the fund.
You have a, you have a, you know, twenty-two million dollar fund balance, ten thousand dollars is not impacting that fund balance. I mean, I, I see your larger point in terms of saying, I, I see your larger point in terms of, you know. Are you gonna pay salaries out of fund balance? I'm, 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 that, that was done to manipulate the tax rate. I'm not, I'm never in favor of doing that.
I'm gonna call for, for a decision on this.
Uh, I, I mean, I, I guess what I will do is, I, I guess what I heard is there is at least.
Three.
Three that are not in favor of cutting the service.
Right.
And so I guess what I will do is then on the June seventh meeting, I guess what I can do is I can bring. Two motions back.
Right.
One to, to leave the service as is. And then one, if, if the board wants to do something. The, the, the option, the additional that was, that was proposed.
That's, that's.
I wonder which ones will hear this and be coming to, we, we went through a budget process, it was months long. Yep, and now we're refiguring the budget.
They, they may or may not, I, I think the big difference is that fixed cost, you know, it's a. That having to drive a car, a driving vehicle out every day, that's a very fixed cost as opposed to.
And there's people that we give money to that help feed people, that's a pretty fixed cost.
I, I understand that, and, you know. I get that, and they can come back and say, well, we're not gonna go do meals on wheels to this many people now, then we make the decision, and, and. The county has done that before, I mean, the county has gone in and cut services to the nonprofits.
We've tried that a lot.
In the past.
Sure, they cut them all, well, okay, so let's, let's move on.
I just wanna read this, this is from the uh, budget.
Yep.
And this is, uh. Other funding sources, it says with Fluvana County's local match funding for its public transportation program. John will be able to match the eighty-seven thousand seventy dollars local funds. With a hundred and twenty-eight thousand six hundred and thirty-nine in federal and state operating assistance. And up to fifty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-six in federal and state capital assistance. So the total cost of services for F twenty-four is two hundred and sixty-nine thousand five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um, of which the local match is seventy-two thousand four hundred and ninety-four. So, but seventy-two thousand is what they needed, and you, you've given them, uh, seventy-six.
Yeah, we know that.
Okay.
I, I think she's looking for.
Is that, I mean, you, you've already.
Yeah, like I said, I, I don't have that right in front of me, so I'd have to, I mean.
Okay.
I think you said you gave all nonprofits five percent.
Again, no.
Two thousand as opposed to the seventy-eight, which is a good point, that's their point in terms of why does it say that in the budget?
Yeah, what, what, what is that, I guess not knowing the, not knowing, here, let me, let me come grab it, just so I can.
This came out of our budget.
Are you looking right here?
Uh, I was reading back.
Other funding source.
Yeah, the other, you said you get three dollars to every dollar we put in, from other sources.
And that's state and federal, which is also tax money.
Was last time I got a paycheck?
I'm not sure what that seventy, was the seventy-two thousand four ninety-four, I don't know what that number right.
That's, that's like twenty-three.
Okay. Yeah, see, I, I thought we funded John's seventy-four and some change, I thought.
Seventy-six. Forever twenty-four.
Twenty-four says seventy-six thousand one twenty.
Seventy-six one twenty is, is what, is what was approved in the budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I wanna say for their.
Their request was.
Well, the, the request was eighty-seven, the request was eighty-seven for, for the service. Up to, I think their full request was one seventeen to expand the service, one seventeen.
So, yeah, and, and that's part of the thing, is John came back a couple of, you know. I think, coming in rapid, and you can remind me, but I think. The, 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 John said, we think we can expand our services to do this. And added more services, and, you know, now they evaluate their budget based on those services and come back. And added more services and you know, now they evaluate their budget based on those services and come back and say. Here's the cost of delivering those services. And so then they request that amount that does or doesn't match up. So I think you're you're you make a good point, Chris. I'm not arguing about your point in terms of. You know, who's gonna come back next and where does that happen and so on. I just. Feel having grown up in countries where public transportation is ubiquitous to the way people do their life there, that it's a, it's a real value to the community. So I'm I'm a big supporter of public transportation.
Okay, so you're gonna come back with.
To motion.
All right. And so we will say. Thank you all for coming. And now we have the consent agenda G minutes of May third, twenty twenty-three H. Minutes of May ten, twenty twenty-three. I R K Chevrolet vehicle purchase agreement J. Record management and file access agreement K. Fiscal year thirty-two, twenty-three, Falk Union Fire Department insurance claim. And anyone wanna pull anything from G to K? Any questions about any of those on the consent agenda? If not, I'd like to have a motion. Okay, all right, K. Fuck fiscal year twenty-three, Falk Union Fire Department insurance claim. Twenty-twelve Pierce pumpper plumber. Uh, then number three two. So something happened to. That.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not quite sure what happened.
And and they put in a claim.
Yeah, I mean, so. Miss Bo, could you come up here, please? Cause I I I know you dealt more specifically with this. And I know you talked to the chief there, so you could probably better answer the question.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I was contacted by Chief Ailey, who um informed us that they were out there. Atlantic was out there doing preventative maintenance. When they went underneath. Um, the pumper, they noticed that there was significant damage, which ended up putting that um pumper out of service. Um, but they do not know what happened.
So they put in a a claim.
They did. They put in a claim for the damage.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was unknown how it got damaged and so. You know, we we were hoping that insurance would cover it and we put it in for insurance to cover it. Insurance covered it, but you know. Again, I'm not gonna speculate on what happened, so I I don't know.
Okay, any other questions about K? So we need, it's gonna, we need a a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Yep, so much.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All right, move them, Mr. Brian Sackman, Mrs. Bigger, all in favor? I, I chair votes, hi, we have one person missing. And now we have. Unfinished business.
Yep.
Removal of illegal signs from the V dot right away.
So to go real quick, again, the board wanted to see, you know, what options were available and what type of penalties could. Could there be for um removing uh temporary signs in the V dot right away? Again, if the county enters into an agreement with V dot, there could be a hundred dollar civil penalty assessed with with. Uh, again, the county would have to have an agreement. So there's a bunch of kind of unanswered questions and Scott Thornton is is on the call here. Is on the meeting here still too. So some questions that came up, what other counties? Um, or those near Flavana that have entered into agreement for enforcement. Um, he provided Caroline County, Spotsylvania County and Chesterfield County. Actually, I just got the some emails for the county administrators to email them to see if there's any. How is that working for them? And and I just haven't had a chance to get to that yet, but I do have the. Uh, emails for them to to go out to to just see how the program's working for them. Um, another question, does Flavana do some or all the removal of legal signs? So again, if we entered into an agreement, Flavana would be responsible for the sign removal. A Flavana staff member would be responsible. And then so then does V dot or Flavana levy levy the civil penalty? Flavana would be the ones that would be levying the civil penalty and we would have to, you know, su- submit an invoice. We would do the work showing, taking the picture of the sign, how what occurred. Um, and then maybe I have to ask Mr. Thornton if if we have to just keep that for record or or we have to send that in. And then we would send an invoice to the individual um sign sign holder. Um, and we would have to track that. And then, you know, talking about, um, you know, about that civil penalty. Is there a percentage that stays with V dot or Flavana? So again, if Flavana is implementing and if Flavana is imposing and levying the tax. Flavana would would retain one hundred percent of that civil penalty. And then, you know, one question I had was, you know, specific to like right aways and stuff, so. Um, you know, different roads have different right away with, so they have provided me with with kind of a spreadsheet for different. Um, right away, right away areas and whis of roads that they have, but there are some roads that it varies. So if if there's ever a question, we would have to go to the courthouse and pull out a plat and see if. You know, to to verify what that what that right away is. So kind of going back to the next question is, okay, would would the hundred dollars per sign? Would it would it offset? There's, there's two things. Would it, would the hundred dollars per sign, would it make a? An impact where it would start to hopefully deter people from putting signs in the right aways? That question I can't answer. I know for for myself, if someone started assessing me a hundred dollars per sign, I would probably. I'd probably ho- hold back from putting the sign in the right away. So so there's there's that one piece there. The second piece is in the piece of, you know, that it's cleaning up Fluana roads. The second piece is, is it? Is it a cost neutral thing? You know, would the hundred dollars offset? Whatever staff time would be. Would be required to to do the record keeping for doing the form for the V dot sign. For getting the V dot sign for doing an invoice to to send to the property or not for the property owner. To the owner of the sign and then trying to collect for that for that invoice. And the collection piece, I don't really know. I'm not sure, and maybe that's one thing I didn't really ask. I don't really know what type of. Mechanism or enforcement we have if we send an invoice. And someone doesn't doesn't pay us in a timely manner. And again, and so if they don't pay us in a timely manner, do we have to? You know, what are they, do we have to go to court? Yeah, handed over collections or something like that. So so I don't know if the hundred dollars would probably. I don't know if it'd be an offset to the cost, but again, is 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 it? Is it that we're trying to de- deter people from doing this and does that slowly kind of trickle in where? Our roads are looking less like uh uh temporary billboards or. So I, so I I guess those are some of the answers and questions that that I would have for the board.
And uh, which employee do you think would be assigned this?
Um, that's a great question. I mean, normally would I would. Think it would maybe fall under code compliance, which is vacant right now.
It did though, right? In the past, it was. Wasn't that under his responsibility at one point?
I mean, not this, because we didn't have authorization to do to do this per se.
I mean, sign collection.
Sign enforcement.
Sign in, I mean, he does code enforcement, but not necessarily, not necessarily these little signs like that now. If there are maybe some signs in places, I mean. I don't know if they were picked up or not. I I I I can't tell you that.
I was in traveling. Travel today too, but traveling. Uh, through Fairfax. And in the median, there must have been. One thousand political signs. At a minimum, if not more. And it was the same, you know. Third, fifteen, twenty, again, it's one right after the other, after the other for a couple of miles. Which is only to say that in comparison, we. Seem to have a very minor problem.
I've noticed since our conversation that campaign signs have moved. Away from the roadways way out in the field. People have heard it and that's why I'm thinking that. We need to make people aware, let's do a campaign to get the information out before we start. Putting some kind of punitive thing. Yeah, and I was thinking that we need to put out, we need to talk about it, because there's with that conversation, I saw signs moved. So um. I think we need to do that first.
The 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 big issue, of course, it hasn't been the political signs. It's been. And let's say it wouldn't be enforced on them too.
Power washing.
Yeah, I mean, and those people know, because same companies that put it on every. And they don't need to be told, they're they're playing the math game here and uh profit and loss and.
I've seen less signs too, though. You know, at Turkey Sag right then, I've seen less signs. I don't know what people just moved them. I've only seen. Somebody moved. Yeah, somebody moved.
I think, yeah, I mean, before you even took this step, if you literally had. Code, the code people just for the next month, just every time they see a sign rip it out. Those sides are not cheap, you know, like. Five, ten, fifty dollars. At some point in time, they're just gonna say.
Get the message.
Scott Thornton, could you unmute uh for this conversation?
What were you gonna look to see how many other counties were actually doing this?
Well, I mean, again. Caroline, Spotsylvania and Chesterfield are 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 the ones that were most nearest to us and, you know, Spotsylvania is, you know. Still a good distance away. That's that's what I, yeah, what I said early on, I was gonna email the county administrators, but I was asked, Scott, Scott, do you have any type of metrics on? The counties that you gave Caroline, Spotsylvania and Chesterfield on what I guess, what what? Any experience you all have with? What the roadways look like for not having signs since they did that?
Um, I can speak to Chesterfield. Um, directly, uh, that program, um, I don't know exactly the mechanism, like as far as who enforces it. But um, I live in Chesterfield County and there the signs are. Not, I mean, if they if they go up, they're usually gone within a day or two. Um, they're pretty. Um, pretty quick on removing them. Um, a lot of times they're removed before the V dot folks can even get out there and get to it. Um, I did speak with our folks over in um. Uh, Caroline County and Spotsylvania County, my V dot counterparts. And um, they said both those programs are pretty active. Uh, with the um district engineer. Uh, over Spotsylvania County, um indicating that they had seen a lot of success with Spotsylvania specifically. Um, Caroline, it it was just deemed successful. Um, but it wasn't the um roaring reviews for Spotsylvania and Chesterfield County.
A- a- and then I guess. I guess kind of one question, I mean, let's just say, let's say Flavana didn't wanna go this route with the agreement. Could a county staff go and pull a sign out of the V dot right away or no, because we don't have an agreement? And I, and I'm not even saying, let's just say Flavana says, you know, we don't wanna charge a penalty. We just don't wanna see the signs in there. Could a county staff go and pull the signs out of the V dot right away and say, we just don't wanna mess with? The 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 penalty and and the invoicing and the collection and all that.
Taking the picture, yeah.
Yeah, the the um, the way I read the agreement was. The um, agreement uh provides you the option to assess the fine. Um, so it's it's you don't, you don't have to if you don't want to.
But 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 for any collection of of signs in the V dot right away, whether we. Whether we levy or we don't levy, we would have to have an agreement with V dot to be able to do so.
A- as I understand it through the the code and the the direction, because. Um, you're essentially acting as an agent of um. Of the commissioner at that point, you would need to have that agreement.
To to put it another way, the if the county enters in into the agreement, whether. Whether it's intended to collect the the civil penalties or not, the the uh. The county officer who is. Taking action against the sign. Would be acting as an as a statutory agent of of V dot. And would have the same immunities and 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 rights and authority that that uh the V dot has. If he didn't. He would probably, he probably be acting lawfully because the sign is unlawful on public property. But when I say probably, that means that somebody could challenge it.
There was some question last time, if an individual could legally or not.
Well, I I think he could, but the the problem with that is what happens if you go out and take down. Fifty signs. And it costs the the the. The owner of the signs, you know, a hundred dollars. Just a business expenses. Each time you do that. That gives him an incentive to wanna sue you. And and I'm not even sure you'd be covered by the county sovereign immunity.
Well, and then there's the fact too is, was it? Was it in the right away or not in the right away?
That's a, that's of course another question. I, since since y'all had that discussion last time, I've been noticing it as I drive along the roads. And I noticed a couple of signs today. Right in my neighborhood that that um. One of them was clearly in the right way. And uh, I I said, you know, no problem with that. It's clearly in the right way, but there were two others that were probably not in the right. But you know, then you get in, where's the edge of the right away? And you gotta, at at minimum, that means you go out and get a tape measure or a laser, laser rangefinder or something. And and uh and measure that. And if you're wrong. You know, then you you could potentially be liable, so. I think that's a consideration. I think the. If you directed a staff member to do that. You would have to recognize that he might be. Exposed to at least some liability. Now, I don't know what it would be, but uh. I think it'd be a little difficult to get. To, assuming he was right. And it wasn't the right away, difficult to get a judge to to give you a big judgment for. Against somebody who removed your sign, which was in the right away unlawfully. Uh, but nevertheless, it's there and. Just as some of us have found out to our to our dismay. In case of litigation, especially of litigation of that sort, the process is the punishment. You know, you you win and everything's great, except you just spent twenty thousand dollars on attorney to get you off.
And 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 to take the discussion even farther, which shouldn't be. If it's. Not in a right way, and it's on private property. But it's two feet over. Within the private property, it's not the property that they got permission to put it on there.
And that's property owners' issue.
Then are you uh? Can you be found at fault because you took it?
Well, I would, I would say one, okay, so so say I took something that wasn't, let's let's just say hypothetically, like all this. Let's say we had the agreement and I took it from someone's property and say they got permission from the property owner to do that, but I took it. Now, then that's different, or if let's just even say that. That they didn't get the property owner's permission. Well, I'm sure. Could the property owner charge me with trespassing from going on their property? Well, they'd probably be happy I took the sign out of their property, you know, is what I'm thinking.
Then be afraid if you're. About the highway.
Yeah, I know.
You know, where was that coffee cup on Woodside Line?
And 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 Scott, one one other question, I mean. So if if we did the levy or we didn't do the levy, the paperwork piece for any Fluviana staff taking this. Out of the V dot right away, the paperwork would have to be done, correct?
Yes, I believe so. Um, we we have to do it. When we collect their signs, we collect them, know where we collected it from. Um, and then we retain those. Signs um for a number of days in case there's any. Question on what we pulled, where we pulled it, things like that. We retain them for anywhere from thirty to sixty days before we dispose of them.
And and so from that standpoint, I mean, certainly if 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 the board said we want. County to do this, I would certainly then charge a hundred dollar penalty. Because I mean, if we're gonna go through the, go through the paperwork effort, like we try and recoup costs as much as we can.
We're basically agreeing to the to become an agent of V dot.
You are quite statutorily, quite literally the agent of V dot.
So again, there's no motion here. I mean, like I said, the, you know, we had some questions, we had some unanswered questions. And I think before the board wanted to move forward with any agreement, they wanted some of this stuff answered, so.
So when are we gonna, when do we resolve it?
I guess if I get, I guess if I get clarity from the board. I guess if I get, I guess if I get clarity from the board on which direction they want to go, or if there's some uh.
Let's present the motion and.
I mean, I, I can just bring it back to the next meeting with the agreement and then let it, let the board vote how they want to vote on it.
That sounds good.
Okay, that's what I do. Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Burn, burn building update. Thank you, Mr. Thornton.
Yep. Um, let's see, your burn building update. Okay, so just a little try and be really quick, because I know it's getting late in the evening here. So just, just a little history. So twenty seventeen, Fluvana was awarded four hundred and eighty thousand, four fifty for construction, um thirty thousand for engineering. The original cost estimate back at that time for the total project was six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So four eighty with a hundred and fifty county contribution brings you to the six thirty. So early on, we, we did um issued a request for proposal for a design, build, burn building project. That basically means we put out a request, say, you know, company, we want you to design and build the project all, all, you know, all in with one vendor. So we got one proposal at that time when we put out the bid and it came in over a million dollars to do the whole project. So after that, the board was like, you know, that was too much. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um, and, and we've got John Lyon and, and Chief Lyon, Chief Constantino here too. Um, so back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, you know, the burn building committee kind of went back and looked at other locality structures, figuring out, you know, are there other ways to reduce the cost of this? So maybe it is more, you know, um, you know, more attainable to do to build this building. So after going through the county engaged and engineer to come up with it, uh, come up with a design that would hopefully achieve a lower cost. So estimates kind of back then based upon, at one point, there was discussion of a concrete roof, not a concrete roof. So the building estimates back at the time came in around eight thirty to nine fifty-four, and some of that did not include any of the site work too. So, so this is kind of what the structure was to look like. That's a rendering of the structure back then after the, after the, uh, from the design for Crabtree. So September twenty twenty, you know, hoping to move forward, the county issued an invitation for bid, basically saying, we've got a design with all vendors, we want you to design it exactly like this, and here's a spec for it. And the low bid at that point came in at nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. So again, you know, um some of the things that that did not include, it did not includes, you know, there was no contingency built in. You know, was there any special inspections, construction admin, or electric or water hookups? And so this just kind of gave a breakdown of our, of our bid. You know, the building came in around four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Site work is really kind of what has been kind of getting us on this, on this project. And then general conditions and overhead and profit. So that's where the nine eighty-seven came from. So again, back in September twenty twenty, still, you know, the board just felt like the, the amount was too high. Um, so January twenty twenty-one, the burn building committee was made aware of a building in Harrisonburg using the same grant, went out to go look at the building. Um, you know, their final building cost estimate was around six hundred and fifty thousand. And again, Harrison, Harrisonburg built the building, I think, right around that. They didn't have any site work costs because they already had patent place ready to go. So it was just basically dropping the building on there. So, you know, even for us, if the building was six fifty, let's just say low cost, we're at two hundred thousand for site work, we're still around eight fifty back then. And this is kind of what the structure, this was the Harrisonburg structure, I believe. Is that right, Chief Constantino? So that's what the structure looks like. Um. So again, you know, looking for options, you know, after, after some of those bids didn't really fall through, again, the burn building committee was trying to kind of go back to the drawing board and, and figure out, is there anything else that we can do that would, that would be cheaper? Um, a month or two ago, uh, a contractor came in that had, um, there's a few contractors that do this, or a few vendors that do this. They do a con- container style burn building structure, and they did a presentation to um the burn building committee, some county staff, and, and some other volunteers. Um, and I'll show you some pictures of what those look like. The estimated cost for a three container, when I say container, basically a storage container, shipping container, um, for a three container structure was around four hundred thousand. That's just for the structure. Now that does not include you know, any contingency fund, you know, site work, you know, if construction administration, electrical or water hookups. And some of these items could possibly be pulled. Um, so, so this, this is what kind of a, a container structure looks like. Um, after speaking with, with uh a few, uh, Ben Powell, who's been kind of the project manager for this, and then I, I'm sure Ben's had, had conversations with um I, I know, he's had conversations with Chief Constantino. They, I, I think what they had kind of proposed was potentially a three container structure building that would, I think what would potentially meet the square footage requirements of the grant program. And you can see with these container type structures, they're expandable. You can stack them, you can, you can do all sorts of things with them, but those are just some looks for them. Now here's the big, kind of the big, the big issue is right now with the Virginia Department of Fire programs, these buildings, these container style buildings are not in a proved structure with the program.
Wow.
Now, I will say, Goochlin County and the city of Richmond, they actually received approval exceptions to use grant funds for these. They were actually presenting, I think, at a, a fire services board presentation, a couple of the chiefs that went there. And I think maybe talking about some of the, the issues that they've been having, like I said, I can't speak specifically to what, what occurred, but anyway, through that presentation, the Virginia Fire Services Board in hand basically approved the recommendation to the Virginia Department of Fire Programs to allow those localities to use grant funds for those. Again, just because they did that, these structures are still not approved. So you know, if we wanted to try and do something, we would have to potentially send a letter to the Virginia Fire Services Board to see if the county can utilize our funds to do a building like this. Um, you know, the, the one thing with this though, th- that I will say is even if they did approve for us to do this, there's still going to be some site work costs. So again, you know, it certainly seems cheaper than what some of the other bids came back in at. Um, we would probably have to do some re-engineering costs too for the, for the site, for the, for the concrete structure, for whatever the, the, the containers are sitting on. So there would be some additional county costs, because we basically spent we've spent all of our engineering costs above and beyond what we were allocated for that. So to do this, there would be some initial costs to engineer it, to engineer or do, do some revisions of the site plan work. And then we would just have to go back out to bid again and see where things come in at. Um.
Excuse me, I'm correct. We use that money with the plan that um we're gonna build it, and it was part of the grant. We don't do it then.
If, 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 if we say, look, you know, we're going to give, we're done with the burn building project, we want to give up the grant, then the county does have to reimburse the state for the thirty thousand dollars that we got for funds to go towards engineering on those. So you know, the Fire Services Board, they're still trying to set up guidelines for this structure, still being developed. Um, you know, I, I think that the, I was told the city of Hopewell is also hoping to use grant funds for a container type structure. Um, but really, there's no, um, there are no container type structures that are really used in Virginia that have used uh Virginia Department of Fire Program grant funds to do this at this point. So, you know, kind of really some of the question is, does the board want myself as county administrator to send a letter to the Virginia Fire Services Board to try and get a, a special exception? And just understand if they approve it, there's going to be some costs to, to figure out even before we go out to bid, to see what the total cost is going to be for the project. And, you know, the one thing I'm, I'm concerned about, and, and this is not to say that it doesn't go through, is, you know, even this past time, when we put out the bid last time, we ended up breaking it up into where a, a vendor could submit on the building only, the site work only, or a combination of both. And the problem is, we didn't get one contractor to bid on the site work only. They got one contractor to bid on the building only, but nothing on the site work. Now, it doesn't mean that we can't do something different or get that. The one thing I will say is, if we don't send the letter, we're not going to know. But just know, if we get an approval, there would be additional costs to at least get to a bid standpoint. Now, the cost may be less, like, you know, as, as, as was quoted for a three container type structure, that cost would be around four hundred thousand, you know, from other costs associated with that. I would expect at least probably two to three hundred thousand for site work, construction administration, you know, are we doing water hookups? Are we not doing water hookups? Because you don't have to have a, a, a water line there. You can bring in tanker trucks too, originally to do some of the, to do some of the tr- the training initially. You could bring water in later. Is, is, is the apron around the structure? Is it gravel? Is it asphalted? I mean, so there are some, there could be some cost savings, but you know, so you're looking at, you know, could be six to maybe seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand of a cost, whereas up until this point, it's been it's been, you know, roughly around a million dollars cost. Like I said, I, I don't want to speak on behalf of the volunteers, but I know Chief Constantino, he's here. Like I said, I, I was at the presentation on these structures and, and he's been through the uh, he's been through the uh heartache and the, and the pains these last.
Would you like to come up and speak?
Five, six years.
Would you come up to speak, please? Yeah, Mr. La.
The, 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 the original commitment by the county was a hundred and fifty thousand, or can you go back to that?
Yeah.
The rest of the money is coming from a grant.
Yeah, four eighty was coming from a grant. I mean, the county initially said at that point, when the, when the grant was submitted, that, that per the grant, we, the county committed to a hundred and fifty thousand at that point. Uh. I don't know, I, I would have to go back. It's been such a long time. I just, I, I, I don't recall.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, I think it was an under.
I don't believe it was part of the CIP.
No, right.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And, and I will say, at one point, I remember the county thinking that the total project, when, when, when the big structure was coming in, that it was going to be hoping it was going to be, I think if it was below seven fifty, that would have been a good day, that, back when.
And the grant is still available.
What's that?
And the burn grant is still available.
The gra- the grant is, and, and, and so we're under a little bit of a timeline, because we've gotten multiple grant extensions to keep the grant moving in, so we didn't have to give the grant funds back. We are though, we are due by this November, I think, to have construction started.
Right.
On something. So I think we've gotten to probably about two or three grant extensions, I believe.
I believe it was three.
Yeah, three. And so, so again, that's, that's kind of where, that's kind of where things are with us. And Chief, you certainly chime in.
Good evening. Thank you for your attention. Um, the only thing I would add, I mean, Mr. Doll prevent, uh, presented it so eloquently. Um, at a standpoint we are now, it's been since two thousand and seventeen, it's very dubious whether we'll get a, a, a site built, uh, building, because the course is just astronomical. You know, uh, and, and it's not going to get any better, it's going to get worse. And this whole uh container type of building, fire building is relatively new. It's been around for a while, what they've been doing fire departments to combat the uh exorbitant cost of these buildings. They've been buying or even getting donated the shipping containers, Conex boxes that are called, have been modifying them to, uh, excuse me, to do training in it. They, they weren't not allowed to burn in, in them. But they could at least do put smoke and do training other than, you know, fire suppression. However, there's a couple of companies out there. One, as Mr. Doll said, came to us in April and presented one, uh, these containers, for want of a better term. And uh, they are approved by NFPA fourteen oh two, which obviously they have to, so we can burn in them. Uh, we can burn either class A material, wood, pallets, hay, straw, or we can do uh a gas uh props, and we elected to save money to do with the class A, the type one type of fuel. Um. Realistically, I, speaking for myself, and I'm sure the other chiefs at this point, would welcome the chance to explore this opportunity of getting the containers, because they are pretty much a lot more inexpensive. But the good part of it is they're expandable. Once we build that building, if we ever did, uh, the originally uh, to expand that building, because who knows what the future is going to bring in firefighting, it would be, of course prohibitive. Whereas these buildings, they are modular in, in construction and type, and we could very easily add to it a, a repelling tower or whatever. There's so many different options that we could put in these buildings, the same as we would if we built an onsite building. So as the chief of Lake Marchelle, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the other chiefs, hopefully, uh, I would ask that the board please seriously consider um, yeah, instructing uh county administrator to go forward and at least investigate this a, a little bit further, ask, request for another extension if we can. And at least give this another option to the board, uh, so we maybe hopefully uh put this to some type of a end.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
And I, I will say one thing. So the Fire Services Board, I think, I think uh, meet in June, mid-June or something. So I would have to get a letter. I mean, we got a little time, but I would have to get a letter drafted to get to them for the Fire Services Board um consideration.
And Mr. Powell, obviously, he has the, the wherewithal to, to do that. So I, I don't know, I see, I don't know if he's on the phone, Ben, or not.
Yeah, he, oh, you know, I, is that, is that Ben? Oh.
I'm here.
Oh, you are there, Ben. Okay, well, good.
I yield the floor to Mr. Powell. Any, any questions?
Yeah, and so, so, so Ben Powell, former retired firefighter, and, and Ben's been kind of the project manager for the county for this kind of the burn committee. And Ben, anything you want to add? I'm sorry, I didn't even realize you were there.
No, I'm good. Uh, Chief Constantino covered it pretty well.
Yeah, I don't think we should give up now. I think we should move forward. We've been working with this a long time, so why not? Continue.
So do I understand right? We're gonna we're either going to get thirty thousand back or spend.
We are, we are either going, we're, we're going to petition them to hopefully allow us to use grant funds to put a bid out for this type of product.
I guess what I'm saying is, if we walked away from it.
We would have paid thirty thousand.
We're gonna pay thirty thousand, or we're gonna spend more money towards this, meaning.
Yes.
We're out money, either way.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I would say there's no harm in writing the letter. Uh, a lot of effort's been put in up to this point. Um, and then, you know, potentially with some economic development programs that we have, maybe we can find somebody to sponsor some of these efforts on site development. Um, which would be nice, not a guarantee, but would be nice.
Yeah, you know, it wa- it was just frustrating that we didn't get any developers to just even submit anything for any of the site work pieces. And, and you know, you know, a, a little bit too. I was like, you know, even if we had the site plan, do we just put out? Because again, with the grant, I will tell you, the grant funds are only for the structure. The great grant funds cannot go for any of the site work. So if the structure costs six hundred thousand, you know, we've got the grant funds for it. But again, if the structure only costs two hundred thousand, you know, we, we still have grant funds that we can't use, and we still have to pay for whatever the site work is, so.
If I may, I apologize. Uh, hopefully to maybe some, uh, allay some fears. Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, because Mr. Doll had to, had to leave this meeting early, he had another meeting to go to. I believe, in listening to the person from Drager who made the presentation to us, I believe his comment was that the site preparation wouldn't be as, as extensive as we would build our own uh building. Ben, am I correct with that assumption?
Yeah, the, the uh, the only thing we would need is he would send us specifications on the foundation work for the building to sit on For the building to sit on, that we would have to do ourselves. But otherwise, you know, what we've done for site plan is good for right now, so. If that answers your question.
Yes.
So again, just need some direction from the board if you will.
We need to.
Motivate to pursue.
What do you all think? What, should we move forward?
I think we should. I think we should write the letter and see what we can do.
Anybody else?
I agree.
We'll, we'll, we'll.
Okay, good.
Thanks, thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you very, very much. Have a good evening.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
All right, and, um, Eric, the new business.
Oh, yeah, so a, a couple, just quick things on a new business. One, Moody's issue rating. So back in two thousand eight, when the county took out the, the, the VPSA bonds for the high school, way back when the county got, uh, uh. A credit rating with Moody's and, um, S and P. So Moody's sent me an email recently that says, look, you know. We either have to start paying because we had some of the old high school bonds that are all, uh, all finished. Because we, we did some of the refunding way back a, a little while ago. So basically, we either have to start paying a three thousand dollar annual fee to, to, to maintain our Moody's rating. Or we just let it go. Now, if we let it go, what that means is sometime in the future, if we ever wanted to. You know, put out any general obligation bonds, um, you know, any lease revenue bonds through the EDA or anything like that. We would have to go through the, the process of, of getting set up with, with, with the rating. Um, so, so I, I kind of talked to our financial advisor, just kind of getting, you know, their thoughts on it. And so, you know, the one thing that they said was, um, sorry, let me think here. So since the county has not sold bonds in the public market based on its own credit rating since two thousand eight. There probably is not a strong incentive to maintain the rating. You can always go back to Moody's for a new rating, which would come at a higher one-time fee as a new rating rather than that. And then, just kind of asking for some further clarification on like fees and stuff. I mean, certainly, if we wanted to do that at a later point, I mean, the fees are gonna be certainly a lot more. I mean, so, so the. Kind of the fact of the matter is, any debt that we've taken out since I've been here, has it either been. Either we've done some bank qualified stuff, you know, so, some things like that where we get tax exempt rates. We've either gone through the Virginia Resource Authority, whether it's like a kind of government infrastructure type project, whether it's. You know, uh, county, you know, courthouse building or water and sewer infrastructure, or we've gone through the VPSA. Which are state pool programs, that we don't necessarily use the county's rating for those types of programs. So, the, kind of the question to the board is, you know, do you find value in maintaining a, a Moody's rating? But if we.
What's it, what's it cost? I mean.
Three thousand dollars a year.
But if the cost of getting rerated is.
Oh, it.
Five thousand dollars.
Oh, it would be more than that. I mean, if, 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 if we did that, I mean, it's gonna be. Uh. It's, let's hear, if we had to get a, a rerating, it's probably gonna be at least. Well, plus depending on what we, I mean, it's gonna, it would.
I mean, it's.
It would be.
That's three years.
Yeah, it would be significant.
But if it's. Fifty thousand dollars to get rerated, then, you know.
It's gonna, it, it would, it would all depend on the issuance. I mean, there's, there's a couple of components. There's a one-time fee for getting a rerating. And then, if you issue bonds with a credit rating, depending on how much of the bonds you issue, there's also a rating, I'm sorry. There's also a fee that goes with that as well.
What, what is, what is that rating?
Um. No, it says the upfront fee is based upon the size of the issue. Below is a scheduled lease revenue bonds, so, so it sounds like there is gonna be that fee still. I think the fee that we would be. It's the one-time fee because we have. We either pay three thousand dollars a year to keep the, to keep the right rating or.
So we have the same rating that we got in two thousand and eight.
No, our ratings come up since, our ratings come up since then.
Pass, what is it? Do you know what it is?
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask that. It's double A.
Double A one or something.
Double A something, yeah.
Okay.
Um. And, and, and you know, so, so with having the rating, you know, one, when you, when you go and do other transactions. They don't necessarily look at your credit rating, but if you have a credit rating, it certain, certainly helps. You know, and for other things, it certainly helps too, so. I just wanted to get some, the board's feedback on this, I, you know, it's.
Except, what do you, what do you all think? Should we pay the three thousand to keep the rating or? Let it go, and if we need the rating, then we go back and redo it. It will cost us. No matter which way you go, it's gonna cost.
Well, I mean. If, if we, what, what are the odds that it's gonna? We went three years without needing it. Um, and spent three grand a year.
Yeah.
Then is it gonna cost us nine thousand?
Twelve thousand.
Yeah, twelve thousand. Yeah, right now.
Four years and then.
Yeah.
So five years from now.
So, I mean, two thousand eight was the last time we needed it, so, I mean, so it's been.
I mean, five years from now.
Are there any?
Will be dollars to the, to the good.
Are there any major, big, uh, big things where that we couldn't do through another funding source? I don't think so. I mean, I don't see any big things. I mean, we've got it, we've got it, uh, you know, there's.
Let's put it this way, we're gonna build a new school in the next five years, yes. Yeah, we're not, then.
Well, I mean, I mean. Well, yeah, I mean, uh, again, if, 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 if you wanted to do that, you know, you're, you're gonna go out to referendum to, to, to do, to issue the bonds. Or. If you go through the VPSA, you could build a new school through the VPSA program and, and so. You know, there's costs to, to, to doing it out of the public market. Your rates may be a little cheaper. But you know, the VPSA is competitive too, so.
No impact as far as in our investments and the. Funds and the balance fund and all that.
No.
So we've been paying each year, right?
No, it just, this is something that just came up.
Okay.
So, um, if we were to build an, a new, uh, admin building.
Yep.
And social services, what, what do you think that would cost? Or will we borrow the money to do that?
Well, we haven't borrowed the money. We haven't borrowed any money for that.
Oh, we haven't.
No, 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 cause we, we have to have a design first to borrow the money. And so, so for that. I mean. I think you, I think the county could go through the Virginia Resource Authority because they do. I think there are other options potentially than, than, than going out. Using the full credit of the county to, to put out something on the public market.
I guess the question would be if, you know, if there's gonna be a difference in the. Rate that we pay because we do or don't have it, knowing that we've got that expenditure.
The, there could be.
Keeping it this year and then dropping it after we get the funding for it. And, you know, just to even a, a tenth of a percent on twelve million dollars, it's gonna be more than, you know, three thousand dollars, I'd say, so. So that, that's the only reason.
Yeah.
So, the only compelling reason I could think.
Right, so in the year of twenty twenty four, we will be going forward with the administration and social services.
You know, that's, that's, that's to be determined, I mean, uh. I think this depends on the cost, you know, it was funny, I was talking to a, to an architect recently and, and I was talking to them about. Projects that they were working on and, and this, they did a lot of school projects. And they were talking about that the school projects were like double the cost of, of what they were and, and what, the one comment that was made is. Is if you need to build anything big like that right now, probably now is not the time to do that if you don't absolutely have to. But, you know, there's gonna be a time in the future where we're gonna, we're gonna need to do something.
So, so where are we? What do you, what do we want to do?
My, my thought is, it's been fifteen years.
Hmm.
Um, you know. If it come out three thousand to the bad in a few years, cause I voted to. Drop it off, I'll take that. You know, I mean, the odds are seeming like it's, it's the net gain is to drop it.
So you decided to drop it, which is your thing?
If, if you don't think we need to borrow any money, then.
I mean, do I think we need to borrow money? Yes, but would we go out on the public market on our own and do it?
Yeah.
I, I mean, we haven't, again, in the past. Ten years we have, and since I've been here.
So we have other sources.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and you can drop it.
Okay.
My only recommendation would be to just get verification that where we go to these other sources for the funding. And not having the rating, would there be an impact in the borrowing cost?
Okay, like, like if we would.
I would just ask that question. You know, if they say, yeah, there's gonna be an impact, then well, what's that impact gonna be?
Okay, so, so.
And, and assuming there is no impact.
Then they'll come back and, okay, yeah.
There is an, an impact that we can measure, because that's what, that's, you know.
Yeah.
It's a thirty thousand dollar impact on money that we're.
Well, well, what they say, it doesn't, so, from the financial advisor says it doesn't have any impact. But having the current rating does provide some comfort to banks or the VRA that the county's financing are in good shape.
Comfort, comfort translates into what they charge you.
It could. That's my point.
Okay, all right, um. Okay, we, we've got, now I have something.
Oh, one, one, one more, the, so developers meeting with supervisors, so there is an email. And, you know.
Yes.
I know we've got another group of solar developers, we talked about this last time, but there's some, there was some discussion that. Maybe we don't want to do this to open up Pandora's box, every time we have a new development coming through. That we're trying to set up individual meetings with board members. With whatever, whatever it may be.
I think that's the discretion of the supervisor.
Well, and, and that's, and that's fine too, and that's.
You know, I asked that, the question. When the last solar company wanted to do so. That there's a precedence because, and, and it just naturally says, if. You stand to make millions of dollars from something, and you can do a sit-down individually and not here in front of the public. And. You know, they're not coming to help you understand, to, to give you a benefit. They're, they're coming to give themselves benefit, I understand. But I certainly don't want to go do another.
No, and I, I think that's a discretion of the, I mean.
And.
What they interest you for this is something what. Interest me is different, what.
Would you all rather that I tell the developers to reach out to individual supervisors and see what they want to do?
Way to do it.
It's white oak, that's exactly what I did. Um, they asked me to not meet them individually, two of them, and I'm.
Because again, again, they, 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 they contacted our office as a courtesy and said, hey, you know, we want to reach out supervisors. And we're trying to coordinate and, but if, i- if it makes more sense from you all to say, look, you don't want to do it.
Yeah.
We'll just. Reach out to us, don't waste time.
Cause I've already, already been out right off months ago.
Yeah.
And, and looked at the property and so forth, so. Anyway, yeah, okay.
We'll do that.
I, I have another old business item.
Mm-hmm.
On, on the solar, you're, on the.
You're, you're, you're out of order, unfinished business, we're in the business now.
I know, cause.
No, we are.
You talk about, you talk about financial comparison. Yes, it, I, I'm waiting on confirmations with some things and, and I need some coordination with, with the commissioner on this too. Because there's, there's just some weird nuances on the projects that are. Um. Gosh, I think they're below twenty-five megawatts, but above five megawatts, there's. It's the way that they're taxed and there's just some kind of weird nuances. Everything of the larger projects, they're all, it's cut and dry how they're assessed. The SCC gives you the values and that's how you tax them. Below those. Project amounts, there's some nuances of what amount is it machinery and tools, what amount of it is real estate? And there's, 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 there's just some really weird nuances that I'm trying to get confirmation on, so.
And, and the response I'm giving people. Uh, and understanding you all work on it. Is. There's just so much I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, until we understand the dollars and the sense of it, then. It's hard to say, so, uh, is, there's not. None of this is scheduled in front of the planning commission, is, is there any one of these projects that's scheduled?
No, not yet.
Any of the, um, white oak or.
White oak has submitted, but they have, they have, uh. Deferral letter at this point, yes.
White rock?
White oak has, white oak has submitted an application, but they've sent deferral letters to, to move forward at this point.
Okay.
All right. Um, someone was wondering about this beautiful little box here. I went to, I took a photographer, a local photographer into. The Fluvan County Community Center and we she took a hundred. And fifteen pictures. Of that building and I brought them in. And I put them in these, and if, I would appreciate you, I don't want to take your time right now, this little box will be sitting here. I want you all to look through this and see the condition. That the Fluvan of Falk Union Community Center is in. Um, I think a lot of it can be taken care of, um. We need to put a dumpster out front, maybe two or three of them and start throwing away. Um. It's just clutter and just unsafe places and. For me, it's. That building is, I'm, I'm embarrassed that I would go in there, I'd go to the auditorium, I'd go to the senior center and. Uh, but I had never. Went into those buildings and looked in closets and things. And. I don't know how it got to that condition without somebody. Throwing up a red flag and saying we need to do something about this. Um, it cannot be used effectively in the condition that it's in. And what we put aside. We can do some cosmetic things, but we will, we won't be able to really do everything. That we, that needs to be done, cause I think we put six hundred thousand dollars in the CIP.
There's a hundred and fifty that was approved in the.
To do the floor.
Or flooring, painting.
Yeah.
A, a lot of interior stuff.
Right, um, all the outside and. I can't. Verbally explain it to you, I would like for you to. Look through these and I'll bring it back every ti- every meeting we have. Because. It's, it, something needs to be done and I hope we don't let anymore. Of our buildings and facilities get to this point without somebody saying. Let's go in here. Do some repairs and do something. So. Um.
I will definitely look at them.
Yeah, please. Okay, that's. My part, so now we're ready for the second public comments. I'm gonna open the second pub- public comments, if you'd like to come for the board. Please come to the lectern and give your name and address. And speak to the board. Anyone? And I will close the second comment and we go to closed session.
Madam Chair, move the planning, county quarters supervisors enter into a closed meeting pursuant to provisions of section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight one. And section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven eight, or the code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended. For the purposes of discussing personnel, county attorney position. And privacy and of individuals' memorial participation.
Okay, can we have a second? All right, we have a motion by Mr. Brian to go in closed session. And second by Mr. Fairchild, all in favor? No one opposed. Care about.
Quick, right?
Yes. Yes.
We're all ready.
Madam Chair, I move the closed meeting be adjourned and the Savannah County Board of Supervisors. Convene to get an open session be resolved the Board of Supervisors does hereby certify to the best of each member's knowledge one. Only public business matters lawably except for the open meeting requirements under section two dot two dot. Thirty seven eleven A of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty is amended and two only such public business matters. As were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting.
You have second. It's a motion by Mr. O'Brien, second by Miss Fairchild, um, favor.
All right, roll call.
Uh.
You're all right.
I.
I.
Here, I said, I. I need a most.
No more.
Exactly.
I stand to uh eleven oh five. Hurry up.
All right. I need a second, all in favor, it's been eleven oh five.
That's good, Jerry.
All right, second.
Second.
Darren, second, hi. This is.
All right, we made it.
You got that right.